I'm gonna admit all the guests then. Everyone good with that? Well, give me, okay.
Good evening. Welcome to Chaska City Council Virtual on Zoom meeting, Monday, May 18th, 2020. Seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting order at seven o'clock. I do have to read our notice here, so I'm gonna go ahead and read that to start with tonight. Welcome, everyone. As you can tell, this meeting looks a little different. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we are holding our media meeting via video teleconference. Because the city council has declared a local emergency for the COVID-19 pandemic, state statute allows us to hold our city council meetings remotely. While we aren't, aren't meeting in person, we want to make sure that the public can participate. If you have joined a Zoom meeting, you will notice that there, that you are muted. You will have a moderator on the call who will unmute those who wish to speak during the public comment portions of the meeting. Public comments will be reserved for visitor presentation, public hearings, or special circumstances determined by the council. Once we reach those parts of the agenda, I will ask if there are any public comments. If you wish to speak and have joined the meeting by computer or tablet, please click on Participants on the bottom of your screen and select Raise Your Hand icon. If you wish to speak and have joined the meeting by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. Once your hand is raised, a moderator will announce your name and, and phone number and unmute your line. Please remember that public comment is provided at the discretion of the council and is meant to provide productive discourse on topics related to the city of Chaska. Speakers shall refrain from comment or behavior that is deemed disorderly, derogatory, obscene, indecent, or off-topic. Any person engaging in such speech or action may be muted or removed, removed from the meeting. Those of you watching online or on Comcast, Comcast Channel 15, please be aware of the following. Some of the city council members, city staff, and presenters are participating in the meeting remotely. There is a delay between the live meeting and the online and cable broadcast. All council actions will be taken by a roll call vote. We are working hard to make sure your voice can be heard while we do our best to protect everyone's health and safety. Thank you for your patience and constructive feedback as we work through this unprecedented situation. Right. Alright, with that, we will go ahead and move forward and we all stand, please, stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Greatly appreciated. Alright, Nate, should I just call a roll or what do you, you want, no, you go ahead and do it. You just go ahead.
Uh, council member, sorry, I'm used to my, okay, council member Hatfield.
Here.
Council member Hubbard.
Here.
Council member Wong.
Here.
Council member Gra.
Here.
Mayor Winchell.
Here. Moves us to adopting the agenda. Corrections or additions to the agenda, if not an entertainment, an entertainment motion to approve.
Motion by Wong.
Uh, motion by council member Wong.
Second by Hatfield.
Second by Hatfield to adopt the agenda discussion. Hearing none. Alright, we will go again, roll call. Hatfield.
Yes.
Council member Hubbard.
Yes.
Council member Wong.
Aye.
Council member Gra.
Aye.
Council member Winchell, aye. Um, motion carries. Alright, moves us to visitor presentation. Is there anyone that's here strictly for visitor presentation, not on any of the topics that we're gonna discuss tonight? Nate, anything?
Does not appear so.
Does not appear so? Okay.
Nope.
Alright, we will move on past visitor presentation. Um, next would be approving the previous meeting minutes. Um, again, if there are no corrections or additions, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved by Hubbard.
Second by council member Gra.
Okay, so I got a motion by Hubbard, second by Gra to approve previous meeting minutes. Discussion. Hearing none, all in fa, oh, that's right. Council member Hubbard.
Yes.
Council member Wong.
Aye.
Council member Gra.
Yes.
Council member Hatfield.
Yes.
And Mayor Winchell, yes. Motion carries. Alright, uh, moves us to item seven, consent items. Again, these are items that we need to approve as a council, uh, but not necessarily need, needing to discuss, but anything or any item can be pulled and discussed.
I have a quick question on, um, seven A.
Yeah.
Um, what, to more curiosity, why was the low bid that came in so much lower than the other two?
Uh, a lot of times, yeah, a lot of times it has to do with their availability. Um, the, uh, you know, typically, this is one of those types of projects that typically we've tried to do ourselves in the past. Uh, we decided because of the current situation and being really tough for our crews to be able to get out there and do that, um, safely and be able to maintain sort of our availability for other operational issues, we went and contracted that out. And, um, and so we had a, a chance to be able to, to go and talk with different contractors about what, uh, what we were gonna be doing. And a lot of times it boils down to availability, uh, or they may have an interest thinking that maybe this is something that we want to work with them in the future on to, uh, do more underground conversions. So, uh, this is the first time that we've actually contracted out for that. So, uh, that could be a reason, but a lot of times it's just availability.
Okay, thank you.
And just, just for a little history on that, we've had some of those in the past. We've had that same thing and I've, I've done the same thing. It was like, holy cow, there's huge difference in bids. And sometimes you get a contractor that maybe missed something and really needs to keep his employees working, and they just bid a little bit lower so that they can get it. And sometimes they don't know what their competition's doing. And I look at it as it's definitely a win for us. Somebody has really left a lot of money on the table. I'm not sure who. Um, but, uh, those are sometimes really, really good things for us. And conditions like what we're in right now might be exact case. They could have had a job somewhere else that something fell through and, uh, they just really need that bid to keep their folks working, so.
Wong, given the fact that we typically would do this work ourselves, I mean, that isn't free either. That has a cost too. But given the fact that, you know, we really had to move in this direction to get that underground done as part of this project, um, I think it's great because we ended up being able to get a really good value for it.
Alright, good on that, guys?
Uh, one other quick question. So for, um, which one item number, um, seven C, Final Platte Harvest West, was there plans for some sort of a sound barrier or sound wall or something for the highway to the homes that are planted?
Uh, Kevin, talk about this. Or Elizabeth.
Hi, Chris. Um, no, there was no plans for a sound barrier wall on this. Um, Vindad did review it and did come back to the determination that they do not need a sound wall, uh, but they do need to implement sound mitigation windows within, uh, some of the homes along the edge.
And so that's just some, the contractor just has to do, they know that?
Right, yep.
They're selling them, so it's their, they got it. Okay.
It's a condition that they have to meet. So it's one thing that we'll look at as a part of the building permit process.
Okay. Um, and Matt, maybe if, if you could just briefly talk a little bit, the last one is about the liquor license renewal, about how we did that with the months that, you know, these folks weren't business and who knows what happens now as we move forward?
Yeah, so what we're doing with liquor licenses, because obviously there's a lot of people that, uh, businesses have been impacted by not being able to be open and utilize their liquor license. So basically what we're, what we did, obviously for 2020 and what we're recommending here for 2021, is that we would actually charge the, the full, you know, we did charge a full price in 2020 and we'll charge a full price in 2021. And then once we have a, uh, you know, a complete determination of exactly how long that shutdown is, then we'll rebate back to, uh, the, uh, the businesses exactly what it was that they were shut down, uh, for the amount of liquor license. So basically prorate their liquor license based on when they were shut down. Um, we just found it would be too difficult to try to guess, uh, what would that, that would be and thought, let's, let's collect the total amount and then we'll, we'll rebate back to them what they actually, uh, didn't use.
Alright, thank you for that. Any, anybody else have any other questions? Again, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items.
Motion to approve consent items.
Motion, motion by council member Hatfield.
Second by Wong.
Second by council member Wong to approve consent. Any discussion? Alright, hearing none. Uh, council member Wong?
Aye.
Council member Gra?
Aye.
Council member Hatfield?
Yes.
Council member Hubbard?
Aye.
And Mayor Winchell, aye. Alright, moves us to item eight, which is adopt resolution 2020 dash 20, approving the concept plan for Sagewood Three Edition, uh, D.R. Horton.
Mayor and council member, the item in front of you tonight is a consideration of property that is in the orderly annexation area, uh, in Lake Town Township of, uh, the Kelzer family property. Uh, this property is generally, uh, just to the west of, uh, the, uh, Sophia Drive, uh, neighborhood, which is on the west end of Clover Ridge. And, uh, D.R. Horton is, uh, proposing a third addition of their Sagewood development. Their first two additions, uh, were, uh, to the south of this, uh, one extension of Clover Field Drive and the other extension of Clover Preserve Lane. Uh, this would be the third addition that they would be, uh, proposing. This is the concept, uh, plan, uh, phase of this process. So the intent of the concept plan phase is really to identify, uh, those issues, uh, that the planning commission and the city council ultimately want to, uh, reflect back to, uh, the developer to consider as they put together those plans. Uh, we, uh, basically in the concept plan phase, uh, like to, uh, try to have their plans stay as simple as possible, uh, so that we can provide some good feedback so that when they put detail work, uh, into, uh, the preliminary phase, uh, that they're really doing it based on good solid feedback, uh, that is coming from both the planning commission and the city council. Uh, this was, uh, at the planning commission, it was actually back in Mark, March. Uh, this was actually scheduled to come before the, uh, city council, I believe it was on March 21st, uh, originally, but that was just when we were going into, uh, uh, some of our, uh, our quarantine, uh, mode with the current COVID-19, uh, issues that, uh, exist. So, uh, I'm gonna turn this over to Liz Hanson, our city planner, who will go through and present the item. And, um, uh, then there'll be opportunities, uh, obviously for a council ask questions. I know we have a number of, uh, members that are public present, uh, at this meeting too. So I'll turn it over to Liz.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you, members of the council and Mr. Mayor. Uh, we have, I'm gonna share my screen here before I forget. Can everyone see that? Okay. Great. Um, so like Matt mentioned, uh, we're looking at a concept plan application tonight, uh, for Sage, Sagewood Third Edition, which is being proposed by D.R. Horton. Um, and as Matt mentioned, um, we have a specific process as we get through development plans, uh, through the city. And I just wanna kind of go through that as a refresher, uh, for some of us who might not be as in, in line or in tune with, uh, what that process is. Um, but we refer to it as our three-step process at the city. So any new development that comes in, um, has to go through three steps, uh, with both the planning commission and city council. Um, and we start, start at the concept plan level. Uh, so from a general perspective, this is a very high-level, uh, review of the project. Um, so you're not getting a lot of details at this point. It's more of an introduction of the actual project. Um, and really the basis of a concept plan is, again, being able to introduce the project, but also to provide some helpful feedback, uh, and direction to the applicant as they move forward, uh, in, in, in the process itself. Uh, so they're not, at this point, uh, developing any technical or very detailed drawings at this point, and that's, um, done intentionally, again, until, uh, they can get some feedback, then they can implement, uh, that feedback into more of those, uh, more expensive technical drawings. Um, so again, this part of the process is, um, allowing for both the commissions and city council and staff, uh, to be able to provide, uh, direction to the applicant as they move forward to their next step, which is the preliminary plan. So when we get into the preliminary plan, that's what, that's when we start to see those more technical code-specific, uh, reviews of the project itself. Um, so you start to get into landscaping counts, um, setbacks, um, engineering, stormwater ponding, um, and the likes. Uh, so at that time, they're starting to address the questions and concerns that were brought up during the concept plan and, and showing those or addressing them in this preliminary submittal. So at that time, we typically see that as, uh, basically a 75 to 80% completion or, um, production of those plans. Um, so until you get to the final plan, at that point, um, again, this is the third step in the process. Again, we're looking at another technical review, but at this point, we should be kind of finalizing the details, uh, on those plans. So dotting the i's and crossing the t's at that point. Uh, I'm gonna include a couple aerials here just to give people reference as to where the site, uh, that's being reviewed tonight is. Um, so this is more of a zoomed-out perspective of where the general site is. Uh, we have Clover Ridge, uh, neighborhood on the eastern side. Um, you have the, the West Creek Corporate Center to the south, uh, Steve Kelzer's land to the south, or southeast, I should say, of the site. Um, this line right here is kind of the, uh, Chaska and Lake Town Township boundary line. So the city of Chaska is basically on the eastern side and then Lake Town Township starts, um, on this western side. So basically, this is the dividing factor between the Lake Town Township and the city of Chaska area. And like Matt mentioned, we're looking specifically within an orderly annexation area of Lake Town Township. So basically, it means that this area is slated to be, uh, in the future, annexed into the city of Chaska. Um, so as of right now, uh, the city of Chaska does have zoning authority and control, um, over this area. Here's a more zoomed-in perspective if we need to refer back, uh, to any of these. Um, so to give you a little bit of a background in terms of kind of historical timeline and where we are today, um, we're going all the way back to October of 1999. Uh, that's when our 2020 comprehensive plan was adopted. Um, and then about a year after that, October of 2000, um, Angler Boulevard, uh, was improved and assessments were, uh, established on the surrounding properties. Um, and that will come into play just in terms of, um, how that affected Steve Kelzer's property, uh, which butted up against, um, Angler Boulevard. So they did receive a, an assessment as part of those Angler Boulevard, uh, improvements. Um, then it was in May of, May 15th of 2000 that the original Clover Ridge concept plan was approved. Um, and then it was May 20th of 2002, uh, that Clover Preserve Second Edition was approved. And when we say this addition, we're talking about all of the area, uh, or all of the lots that, uh, align Sophia Drive. Um, and then a little bit later that year in September of 2002, that's when the Kelzer Farms, um, and the city of Chaska came to a settlement agreement, uh, with the assessment, uh, that was placed on their land, uh, back in 2000. They've been working for the last two years on an appeal to that assessment, and then they ultimately came, um, to an agreement in terms of how that assessment would get applied in the future with future development on the land. Um, so the settlement agreement was signed and put in place, um, in September of 2002. And with that came, uh, certain land use designations or future guidance, uh, for, uh, the Kelzer land. Um, and so it was December of that same year in 2002 that our 2020 comprehensive plan was amended to, uh, reflect all of the, uh, changes or the guidance that was, uh, put in place by that settlement agreement, uh, between the Kelzer Farms and the city of Chaska. Um, and then it was approximately in 2003, uh, that, uh, signs were installed along, uh, the perimeter of Sophia Drive, uh, on, uh, yeah, Sophia Drive, uh, basically stating, um, that the Kelzer land to the west of them, uh, was going to be, um, guided for future development. So you'll see a picture of that, um, of those signs that were installed along the perimeter in the top right of this slide, um, just allowing people to understand that there will be future development, uh, on the, the Kelzer land just west of them, just west of Sophia Drive. Um, and then in terms of, um, how soon and, um, how soon the Sophia Drive neighborhood did sell and get built on, um, it did start selling in April of 2003, uh, the first home was sold. Um, and then that ended, or the last home or lot was sold on June of 2006. Um, and then fast forward several years, uh, to May of 2018, is when the first concept plan for Sagewood was approved. Uh, so that basically encompassed all of, uh, the termination of Clover Field Circle and then the extension of Clover Preserve Lane. Um, so basically the north and south portions of the initial, uh, Sagewood neighborhood, which is currently being constructed right now. Um, and then October of 2018 was when the final plat was approved for the first edition. So that encompassed, uh, the termination of Clover Field Circle. And then it was in April of 2019 that Sagewood Second, um, final plat was approved for that, and that encompassed the lots on Clover Preserve Lane. So now we're looking, again, basically an extension of Clover Preserve Lane and Sophia Drive into Sagewood Third. So, again, as we've mentioned, we're looking at a concept plan approval tonight, specifically for 83 single-family detached lots. Um, in terms of how it relates to our current comprehensive plan, um, and the current Clover Ridge concept plan is, uh, that the use is consistent with both of those. And I've included, um, a portion of our, uh, 2030 land use plan showing, uh, the low-density residential guidance on the western side of Sophia Drive and Clover Preserve Lane. So they're basically showing or proposing, uh, the detached single-family lots within this, uh, yellow area that was guided in our 2030 land use plan. And then the current, um, Clover Ridge plan, um, also showed, uh, the implementation or inclusion of that low-density area on the Kelzer Farm piece. So, uh, when we talk about consistency with both of those plans, um, again, we're, uh, showing consistency with that, with what they're proposing tonight. Um, getting into the existing conditions of this property that they're looking at, so they've delineated kind of the project site area in red here. So they are looking at a parcel of, uh, the Kelzer property, uh, that will total approximately 42 acres, uh, in size. As I mentioned, it's in the orderly annexation of Lake Town Township. So with that would mean that as they move forward in this, uh, land use process, they are gonna have to get, uh, the area annexed into the city of Chaska. Um, one of, uh, the key features of the site is a creek does basically, uh, segment, uh, the area into basically a north and south, um, portion of the site. This creek runs right through it, so it just provides a natural break between those two areas. Um, the applicant has also, um, done an initial tree survey at this concept plan level, which typically isn't something that we, um, need or require at the concept plan level, but given kind of the magnitude of this area, uh, with significant trees, they felt, uh, a need or a benefit in providing that at this early stage. Um, so they did denote, uh, a good portion of significant trees in this eastern or southeastern area that butts up to Sophia Drive and Clover Preserve Lane, um, which is mainly a scattering of oaks within that area, uh, ranging from 20 inches up to 35 inches in caliber. So these are, uh, pretty sizable trees, um, uh, in this area. Um, and just because it's brought, been brought up before, there is a heritage tree, um, denoted outside the boundaries of this project site area. It's one of the oldest cottonwood trees in the city, um, or within the local area. So, uh, we wanted to make sure we pointed that out and can confirm that it is, uh, remaining in its place. There's no plan to, uh, eliminate this heritage tree. Um, and as I mentioned before, the main access, accesses into the site are from Stub Streets on the eastern side, that above the eastern property line here. So you have Clover Preserve Lane, uh, on the southerly portion, which would connect into the existing Sagewood development. Um, and then you have Sophia Drive, uh, to the north there, uh, connecting into the Clover Preserve, uh, Second Edition. Um, they've also noted that there's, uh, extremely poor soils on the south side of the site. Um, so because of that, they have looked at that area more as open space stormwater ponding, uh, area potential. And then on this slide, we have the proposed concept plan from D.R. Horton. Um, this concept plan is for 83 lots, um, and it is, again, segmented by both kind of the north and south sides. Uh, so the north area, um, is showing 60 lots, um, within this area and then 23 lots to the south, uh, in that wooded area. Um, so as you can see, there's both extensions coming off of Sophia Drive and Clover Preserve Lane that basically provides kind of an internal spine for the southern area and then, uh, a connection across the creek to access the, um, other 60 lots on the north side. Um, they have a cul-de-sac, uh, proposed on the south side of the south portion and then a number of cul-de-sacs on the north portion. Um, we've kind of given some initial guidance to round off this, um, street area on the north portion, uh, just to provide kind of a natural end, uh, to the development itself. Um, another thing to note, which I should have noted in the existing conditions, is the, um, railroad tracks to the north of this development. So this is the Twin Cities and Western Railway, uh, that abuts the north edge, uh, of the site. Um, so it will be important as, uh, the applicant moves forward in terms of how they provide a, uh, inadequate buffer and screening mechanism on the north side for these northerly, uh, lots. Um, so that'll be something that they'll have to work on, um, as they prepare their preliminary plan. Um, they've also noted that they will be incorporating a play, playground and park space of some sort within the development. Um, they also did that in their second edition or first and second edition, um, development where they provided a park space, a private park space, um, for their residents to use. Um, so they would be doing the same, uh, with the addition of these lots. And the location is still yet to be determined. Um, that's all kind of dependent on circulation and That's all kind of dependent on circulation and making sure that they balance park sites efficiently. And then my last point kind of gets to the house styles, which you can see kind of on the left-hand side of this slide. So they will be building the same models and styles that you see in their first and second editions. So they aren't changing kind of the product line that they've already implemented in those previous editions. As I mentioned, they did provide a tree survey at this concept plan level, so it is worth reviewing at this stage of what they're proposing so far, what's existing in terms of trees. So 141 trees were surveyed, and those all were in this southeastern portion of the site. The northerly area is basically agricultural land, so there's no trees within that area. So we're mainly talking about the southeastern portion of the site. And as I mentioned before, these are mainly oak trees scattered around here. There are some other basswoods and cottonwoods that are kind of scattered within there, but mainly the trees that you'll find in there are those specimen of oaks. And just to show kind of within their concept plan how that relates to kind of the tree preservation and what they've surveyed so far. So at this high-level concept plan, they have started to look at tree preservation opportunities within the site itself. So as you can see, they've shown some outlot areas or open areas where some tree preservation can occur. So from this perspective, they're at least starting out on a good foot to try to implement those areas that make sense within the development. Again, that'll be something that we'll still continue to work through as we receive more details and have gotten a good and clear assessment of the trees and their proposed grading plan to see the viability in saving some of these trees. One thing that worked or that was explored and implemented in the first and second editions is the use of a conservation easement in an outlot area to protect groves of trees on the rears of these properties. You can kind of see it in this drawing here, the delineation of a portion of that outlot on the first and second editions for tree preservation. But that could be something that they could explore within this third edition. It could be a mix of outlot space or a conservation easement over backyard trees. It really depends on kind of the layout of the plan and what would work best for preservation. But we've seen it done both ways, and they've worked successfully in other developments. So again, that'll be something that the applicant will have to address in their preliminary submittal is how they plan to approach that item. The developer also did conduct a neighborhood meeting this year that happened on March 2nd of 2020. They were able to meet with the residents of Sophia Drive and other people within the vicinity on the proposed concept plan. And this again is to get a feeling for some of the concerns that some of the residents would have with what they're proposing. And I've listed out kind of the main comments and concerns that were brought up during that meeting. So first one being traffic and roads was a main concern with the overall proposal and how it basically goes into the other sites or how it affects the other sites. So they did have concerns about the amount of traffic and where the traffic's going to go through the existing neighborhoods. I did want to mention that there are a couple of conditions that address some of these pieces. So if more needs to happen within these conditions or more direction, we can certainly take a look at that. But just for reference, as we're moving forward, we did include a couple of conditions to address some of these key pieces here. So with traffic and roads, conditions number 24 and 25 in the resolution do address how the applicant needs to provide information in their preliminary plan in relation to this piece. And then secondly, density was also a concern that was brought up. And for reference, what they're proposing is 2.1 units per acre. And for the low-density residential guidance for this area based on the comp plan, they have to meet a two to five unit per net acre requirement. So it does fall within the threshold of that guidance. Thirdly, tree preservation was also brought up as a main concern with the development. Again, that's also a concern with staff, and we've included a couple of conditions within the resolution to highlight on that, so conditions number eight and nine. And then lastly, there was also concerns brought up about school capacity with the added density in the Clover Ridge neighborhood. There was concerns about whether or not the schools would be able to accommodate additional capacity or additional growth within their schools today. And then as I mentioned before, since this isn't an orderly annexation area, it's still in a state of not being formally annexed into the city of Chaska, so it's still within an orderly annexation area of Lake Town Township. So in order for the applicant to come back with a preliminary plat and rezoning entitlement from us, that the annexation will need to occur prior to that application. So that'll be something that the developer will need to work on and will obviously pursue after the outcome of this meeting. Another item brought up is whether or not the concept plan or the development area that's being looked at is a part of the Jonathan Association. And as of right now, this residential addition is not proposing to be a part of the Jonathan Association. It has, the association has come forward in hopes of them joining the association. But the developer did put forth their own private park in the first and second editions, and they plan to do the same in this third edition and create their own HOA as a part of that. So again, that's kind of a private discussion between the developer and the Jonathan Association in terms of what happens with that. But at this time, the developer has chosen or iterated to us that they are not planning to be a part of the Jonathan Association, rather they'll have their own as a part of this new development. So in conclusion, at the concept level, we believe they've done a good job at getting the high-level perspective of the plan and the project itself. So with that, we are asking you to make a motion tonight to adopt Resolution Number 2020-20, which is approving the concept plan for Sage Wood Third. And that would be based on the conditions that are listed within that resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions, go back to any slides, anything like that. Otherwise, the applicants are also within the meeting too, so if we have specific questions for them, we can get them engaged.
Liz, I do have a couple of questions. So the land outside of the red borders, is that developable or will that be developed? Or will that always be, I'll just call for better, for lack of a better term, farmland?
Correct.
So that'll never be, none of that'll be developed?
Well, it's in the rural residential zoning, or in the rural residential guidance area, so it does have a density cap or how many building eligibility you can get out there. But for the most part, it will have that agricultural rural development out there.
Say for Kevin Ringwald, I think it might be helpful if he sort of explains sort of the history of this parcel and property that was actually preserved in the green belt as it relates to this property and to the assessment that was on Engler. Kevin, if you wouldn't mind, I think given some of that history might be good for people to understand.
Liz, can you go back to maybe the wide aerial?
Yes.
Please, thank you.
This one or?
Sure, yeah. Well, that's the biggest one we've got, and that'll work out just fine. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Where the area, as Liz already mentioned, the area that shows the word site is kind of near area under consideration for this evening. The, when Engler Boulevard was built, as some of you may remember, in the very early 2000s, Engler Boulevard kind of stopped right about Bavaria Road, and there was, and then there was a gap, and then Creek Road kind of curved down from Laconia and kind of went down into Chaska and old Farm to Market Road. There was building demand in the area and pressure from traffic movements to provide a stronger east-west connection in the county. And the city extended Engler Boulevard from Bavaria out to Creek Road, and in doing so, assessed the adjacent property owners of Chaska fairly significant amount of money for that construction. As a discussion with the Kelzer family at that time in trying to come to some conclusion
I think he got, I think he's frozen. So hopefully he can get back here.
Why don't, I'm sure he's gonna have to get back on again. If you have other questions, maybe you could go through that and we can come back to this one. I think it's important that people understand that side of it.
Yes, I agree. So Liz, the other, Liz, are you still good?
Yep, I'm good.
I can't see anybody, so, okay. So another question I have is, a lot of times if so many inches of trees are removed, do they have to be then replanted through that addition and whatever? Is that, is that true in this case as well?
So we do not have anything in our ordinance that requires a certain re-mitigation of trees that are affected. The only thing we have in our ordinance that really protects trees is our wooded steep slope ordinance, but protects anything 18% in grade in, or 18% in slope and greater. So if...
I'm back.
So if they take down a level of trees within this development, one of the processes of PRD is having flexibility in what they're proposing for tree preservation. And so basically what they provide for that, if they take down a level of trees, there's not a re-mitigation.
I think the important part of that is that, you know, we, you know, some cities will go on and they'll just zone an area residential. And when they do that, they sort of take away the negotiation powers to be able to go in and negotiate specific things with the developers. So they're sort of give and take. You say which things are more important to us and which things are less important. And we've always taken the approach of saying, let's negotiate these things out because there are certain things that we care more about than we do other things. And let's focus on the things we care about and the things maybe we don't care about as much, let's use those as leverage to be able to preserve the things that we care about. And so just like we've seen in other developments in town, when they're not trees, they're protected on wooded steep slope, we'll oftentimes go in and work with the developer to say, well, how can we put things here in order to preserve this? Or, you know, so it's really trying to go through and preserve the most beneficial things. So, I mean, we've seen that throughout Clover Ridge neighborhood. That happened down on the extension of Clover Preserve Lane where there was trees that are there and some are preserved and some aren't. So they don't have the ordinance or statute, ordinance protection like they do on a steep slope, but a lot of times you can negotiate some of those key ones in there.
Okay, thanks.
Now we can get back to Kevin.
Let's go back to Kevin, yeah.
Sorry about that. I think my computer started an update. Great timing. One of the things the Kelzers wanted to preserve was to help pay off their assessment, but also was to preserve their farm up at the, kind of the southeast corner or Pioneer in the left of them. And in doing so, one of the things where Liz has got her cursor right now is regiding that to one per 80, one dwelling unit per 80 acres, which was a new comp plan designation and a new zoning classification for the city. We have nothing, we had nothing since then and before then that was that least amount of units. But in protecting that, they also wanted some opportunities, as I mentioned, to pay off their assessments. And that density was kind of clustered into a couple areas, and this is one of those areas to facilitate the preservation of that corner coming into the community on Pioneer Trail, which was viewed then and still is as an important entry into the community. And providing kind of a westerly edge on this site to the Clover Ridge neighborhood. The analysis that was done at the time was really looking at how far could the sewer go out into this area, really from a capacity perspective. This was about as far as the sewer could go west. The remaining sewer for this large area that you see in kind of between the corporate limits and County Road 11, almost all of that gets served by a sewer that comes up Creek Road and serves that area to the south of where the word site is. So that balance, kind of getting back to the mayor's question, if that area were to develop, that area would be serviced and accessed coming, kind of coming from the south up from Creek Road. And I'm not sure what else you wanted me to hit on that.
No, I think that's a big thing. I think I just want people to understand, how did the density end up on this particular parcel? This isn't a whole lot different than when you look up at our Chevelle development or even the Chaska Town Course development where you saw clusters of density occur to try to preserve areas that were deemed to be really important. So up in the Clover Ridge neighborhood, there's a huge wetland complex in the center that make up, makes up about 60% of that neighborhood, and that was preserved by clustering the density into different areas. The Town Course is the same thing. The area where the actual golf course exists, existed and was kept bare by the fact that the density of homes were clustered around the outside of that. So it's not, it's not an unusual technique that we've used in Chaska. It's been used quite often. And again, it's been to try to balance what are the main assets that we're trying to preserve in the community permanently and balance that with people's desire to be able to do something with their property.
Okay, anyone else on the council have any questions?
On, one other quick thing about that, that was the agreement that was back in September of 2003, or, I'm sorry, September of 2002, that was approved and then the zoning comprehensive plan amendment that went with it. I believe, Kevin, that was in December of 2002. So that happened at the exact same, you know, about the exact... Uh, so that happened at the exact same, you know, about the exact same time Sophia uh neighborhood area was being uh developed. And then that first hu- house came online about four months later.
As you can imagine, the uh agreement between the city and the Kelsers took a considerable amount of time to uh negotiate, given how many varied parcels were involved um on on everybody's part.
So then, it, and just to help me again understand, so the the Kelsers' property, does this end at what I call the westerly border? And then it's the Brozi Farm then, is that what happens?
It basically, the way it's been delineated is kind of up to this point. So there are portions.
I'd rather you go back to the other map, Liz.
Can you not see it? Sorry.
Uh, it's not very, th- this one's way better.
Yeah, I'll try to generally outline.
Yep.
But basically, the way our comp plan kind of delineated it was kind of where I'm showing my cursor.
Okay.
Here for the low density.
But then what about?
That would be the extent.
What about if you come to the bottom of the screen now? So if you come down to the bottom, what, is that all?
Right here.
Where where does, where does that property end? And I think Cal Haskins has signs on the rest of that property.
Well, Kelsers goes to the south.
Sidewall at Engler.
Goes over, see where your hand is over to the east of that? That's all Kelsers' property there.
Okay, that I get.
Yeah, and then just to the south is.
But anything to that, what I'm calling west of that white line where your cursor just was, that is not Kelsers' property anymore. Correct? So that line.
This is Kelsers', right here.
Yeah, and just to the south of that is somebody else's property.
Right.
Yep.
And I know on the north of the railroad tracks is Kelsers', that I got. I, I, so, so this really is, so what you're telling me, this is probably the end of the developable property of the Kelsers? This side?
Yes.
Okay.
With the exception, I mean, this area.
Yeah, I, yeah, that I.
Delineated differently, but yeah.
I I'm just talking where where we are now. I know that that whole area there is is available and looking to be commercial industrial, so. Okay. Anyone else on council have questions?
Yeah, to play off that, so, the north of the railroad tracks, you said that was rezoned back in two thousand two to be a rural, I can't remember what the ratio was.
Eighty to one.
Eighty to one, so that's what's north of the railroad tracks?
Correct, yep.
Okay. And then where the, where the little black box is next to the left of site, this farmstead over here, I can't, I'm putting my mouse on it, but of course you can't see it. Um, whose property is this and is this developable then? Does that fall under that sort of rural zoning?
Yeah, that, this one, so this is zoned or guided, well, it's zoned and guided for rural residential, so it has a one per forty acre building eligibility.
Okay.
And is that part of the orderly annexation?
Yes, it is.
And where your cursor is now, that belongs to someone else.
Yep, this is the Cal Haskin.
Does he own all the way to uh Jonathan Carver then?
Except for that cutout piece there.
Okay.
Right.
So where the, where the current Cornelius House is, is not, that that's not owned by Cal Haskins then?
No.
Okay.
So it, so pretty much everything from Victoria Drive to the the border where the township and city was currently are, with the exception of the site, are rural or, and south of the railroad track is basically the RR two oh one to forty.
Right, yep.
Yeah, and how many, how many acres are there total in those?
In all of here? Oh.
I think Mike, you muted yourself.
Yeah.
Including the site that you're talking about?
Including the site.
Excluding.
Oh, excluding. So, it's probably.
Harold Brozi's an eighty.
So then you put, but two houses.
Yeah.
Harold is what, did you say?
You can.
Harold Brozi is an eighty acre parcel.
Okay.
This one.
He's got two, you put two.
That's eighty acres.
So there could be like one, two, three, four, five, five, maybe six houses total in that area.
Under the current zoning.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And then, and then that means that because they would own it, any, any possibility, any road going through there would be completely up until the homeowners to allow permission or sell off their their land.
Right.
Okay, so basically, the site we're talking about is completely landlocked between the railroad tracks, the Kelsers' property in the north, and then these other owners to the south.
Yes.
Okay.
And so, just another point of clarification, the site that we're talking about, was that at one point in time zone, the forty or the forty to one at all, or?
Yeah, before the comp plan amendment in two thousand two, it was that rural residential classification.
Okay.
But it was rezoned prior to the first house going on the Sophia neighborhood.
Okay.
It was rezoned because it has a trade-off for that one for eighty to move the density that would have been up there down here.
Yes.
Yeah, that was part of that, as Kevin talked about that agreement to preserve the farm.
Yeah, and which is also part of the green uh, the uh, the greenway that we're trying to preserve on that outer edge and that particular intersection. Yeah.
Yeah.
Just have one additional question, you guys have kind of hit my questions. Because obviously, the reason for those questions is trying to figure out, do roads continue or are there different ways to get the traffic out? Which is obviously, it's one of the major concern, right? And the neighborhood is provided with that number of houses going back to the east through versus north, south, and west. Um, the only other question I had that came to mind is if you go to the, where the creek is, uh, I'm assuming a bridge needs to be built to go over that creek, is that a cost that gets assumed by the so, the developer?
Yes.
Yes.
And and any, I mean, I don't, it's concept, so I'm guessing they don't have a dollar on that, I'm just kind of curious on, is that a difficult bridge? Is it, I mean, I don't know how big the creek is, I'm just kind of curious, because sometimes that can be cost prohibitive, uh, if it's, bridges are cheap.
Yeah, we don't have any details at this point, but there there will be a level of either a bridge or culvert, box culvert, to try to cross that terrain.
You know, and and John, just to get to your point about, you know, traffic and where it goes, I I think it's important to understand, especially under a concept plan, how it's shown now isn't the only way that it could occur. Um, I mean, the, and I think that's the important part of a concept plan here is is to note that, you know, there are certain things that that we need to provide as as guidance back to developers as they look at sort of the second phase. You know, one of them, and I, you know, I know the neighbors are gonna speak for themselves, but one of them that I think is a, is something they brought up that I think is a real good point is the way that the neighborhood is is designed in the concept plan now. Uh, it sort of naturally lends itself to putting most of the traffic onto Sophia Drive. There are ways that the road, and even ones that we've looked at, but I think it would be a good comment back to developer, ways to look at how you split that traffic more evenly between Clover Preserve Lane and Sophia Drive. Um, a- and so, um, again, I, you know, the developer hasn't had any time to go back and actually look at the details, because this is a concept plan phase. Um, but I I think that that's a legitimate uh issue uh to to look at, that uh, um, the way it's designed now lends itself more to Sophia Drive, where I think it could be split much more evenly.
See, and that's why I was asking the questions about the rest of that, because I see a pretty s- easy solution to this. Is just to to make that loop road come off the middle of that area and bring it right over to Clover Preserve. You know, it's crossing the creek again, but, you know, sometimes those are things that you have to do to make it work. Now, is this one of these things, like when we cross the creek, it takes two years to get permits?
Well, that was my question from a neighborhood meeting, that the answer to the question with the creek crossing, and it sounded like they said it had something to do with the DNR or Army Corps of Engineers. Is this correct?
Fine, I'm, Kevin, you probably can answer that better than anybody.
Or Matt Clark.
Or Matt Clark, yeah.
There, there's a, there's a, somewhere on that creek, there's an edge where the Army Corps of Engineers jurisdiction ends. And where that ends, um, when you're dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers, it does take more time. Not that it's impossible, because we did it over on the extension of Clover Ridge Drive um through the industrial area uh where we got the permit to cross. Um, north of that point, I don't know exactly, it's not really shown on the map, but generally, we're somewhere north of that point, um, you don't need a permit from them. And so, um, but I think coming up with the right solution in terms of where the road should go should be the driving factor. And then, kind of dealing with it from there in terms of whether you need a core permit or not, um, not letting that necessarily drive um a decision point, especially one that seems, seems to have a lot of interest on multiple sides.
Well, and I mean, I think Kevin makes a good point, we go through that process all the time, because the first is, the first determinant should be, where should it go?
Right.
And then the question is, what do you need to do to put it there?
And I, you know, and and I do want to explain that, you know, this this process that we're going through is 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 pretty normal. It goes to the planning commission, they look at it, does it meet all of those restrictions? Then it comes to us as a council, and um, the developer really doesn't want to do anything until the council's had an opportunity to look at it. Because again, I I mean, like I said, I think, I think we're far better off looping that road to Clo- Clover Preserve. And if you have to cross the creek twice, then that's what we have to do. But I think that that will move a lot of that traffic all off of Sophia, or, you know, off of Sophia, now you're split. Now, now you have that opportunity to go either way. And so, I I, part of me says, uh, the developer knew what the primary concerns were to do something, but I get it, that they don't want to do anything until the council looks at it. Because we, we look at, we're already looking at it differently uh than planning, but planning's looking at it from, you know, how they have to look at things. So, um, I just wanted to be clear with that, that the residents listening in, that this is, this is a process. What we do in a concept is, un- until the dev- the developer's not gonna put any more money into this project, until they really have a pretty good idea what council and planning are all thinking. Council's laid out their concerns, and uh now, obviously, this is our opportunity to bring forward our concerns. I mean, planning, I'm sorry. So, I just kind of wanted to explain that to everyone, to make sure that that again, that this now all has to come back to the planning commission again, and council again. So, the, this is uh, again, just step one of a process, that this is their, this is the developer's shot at what they want, how they'd like to see it develop. And now we put our uh pieces and parts to it as as well, and and um, and we move from there. So, but I I I do that, like I said, I I just, it just seems like it, it's fairly simple to be able to put that road and and connect the Clover Preserve. But it might catch a corner of that other piece, that parcel there, and that's why I was concerned about, what does that mean? Or do they, or do they go around it? I I don't know, uh, at this level, when we're looking at it at the thirty thirty thousand foot level, what that really means. But I just think that that would be a good solution to uh a good share of this problem, uh, where the concern is about traffic in, on the Sophia Street.
My last question before uh, obviously, listening to neighbors, would be the green belt. Was that part of the green belt? Did that get pushed back? Where does that all sit?
Yes, I mean, originally, it was part of the green belt. Um, and then with the comp plan amendment in two thousand two, it was given that new designation to the low-density residential. And what was the second point of your question?
Well, it wasn't a point, it's just how much of an intrusion, you know? And so then, is that farmstead that we talked about, that uh, I can't remember the last, you said Broz?
Brozi, yeah.
Yeah, Brozi to the left, is that now part of the green belt? Is that something?
That always was part, that always was part of the green belt.
Okay. Um, all right, I mean, it, it, that's just the one thing, it, you know, I get a little, sometimes a little bit worried about, you know, we have something set up for a reason, you know, and then if we're tru- intruding in on it, how much are we going to intrude on it um till it's gone?
I think it's important to understand the gives and takes of it, though. So that if you're familiar with the Cornelius Barn up at that southeast corner of Pioneer Trail, I'm sorry, Kelsers' Barn up at the southeast corner of Pioneer Trail and County Road eleven, and that area that Liz is circling now, that would have developed a a much higher density uh than it would have without this agreement. And now, because of that, that farmstead is able to be preserved at a major entrance into the community where it wouldn't have been before. And so I think that, you know, it's all give and take. I mean, it's, uh, it was a negotiated settlement to to try to give the the Kelsers the ability to uh get enough value off of their property to be able to pay off the assessment, but at the same time, try to preserve the things that were most important to them. Which I think at the time, the people who were uh, who were working on this, you know, back in two thousand two, they, you know, they said, well, we think that having the preservation of that barn and it, or of that farmstead at an entrance into the community is good for the community as well, because it's a good entrance uh and and creates a sort of a rural feel as you come into the community.
Okay.
Hey Matt, and that, obviously with that agreement that was created, and I I clearly understand the give and take, is there a timeline associated with when development has to happen? I mean, my assumption here is, if we, if this didn't move forward and it fell, or we said no, um, you know, at at the stage or a later stage hypothetically, are we any risk of violating violating that agreement? And opening ourselves up to some risks there, or is there a window of opportunity? Obviously, it didn't happen immediately.
Yeah.
Uh, but again, don't know what would come next.
Here, here's the risk as I view it, uh, is that agreement was developed to be able to provide the Kelsers' family with value on their property to be able to pay off their assessment. And in order to pay off the assessment, they needed to be able to have some development on their property to be able to do that. That's probably not where they started uh with wanting to do it, and I think they'd probably be the first ones to to say that. But that's where it ended up, uh, where that was par- a parcel of property, including other parts of it, uh, that were negotiated to allow them to have a way to pay off that assessment. I think it's a logical extension from that. If we didn't allow them to uh put development in there, that it would be really difficult for us uh to expect them to pay off that portion of the assessment. Uh, in which case, that would be a financial risk for us, because then we wouldn't have the payback of the dollars for that assessment for Engler Boulevard. Because I don't, I mean, it's pr- it's probably a legal question, but it's also a fairness question, too, is, if you take away their ability to do it, how can you expect them to pay it?
Thank you, that makes sense.
Yeah.
All right, anyone else from from council, questions, concerns, thoughts? Before we, um, again, I I just, um, and we still have an opportunity. I want to make sure all of our council questions are answered before. And again, this is not a public hearing, and what, um, but we are gonna give some, the the residents an opportunity to speak. My hope is, is that you have someone that's gonna be a general spokesman, that's kind of speaking for all of you, and ha- give us the same, because um, what happens sometimes in these is, is that uh, it's the same thing uh over and over, you know, we're concerned about the traffic. And so if we can kind of narrow it up to that and 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 get through the conversation, that would be the best. But if there's people that got something that they want to bring up that has not been brought up, so I I want you to feel free to bring those forward. But if some of those items are already brought forward, uh, I hope that you can refrain from bringing them up, uh, or at least just mentioning it in your, in your comment without uh a lengthy discussion again, because sometimes uh we kind of hit on the same things over and over. So, I just want to be clear on that, um, before before we move. So I just want to be clear on that, um, before, before we move forward. And again, uh, council, I, I just want to make sure that all your questions or your comments, um, cause, um, again, from my point, I'd like to see that, that road looped. And then, uh, I would like to see, uh, the ability about, can they take some of those lots out of the woods to preserve more of the trees? And again, that would be something that we'd have to see in the next phase, um, to see that. But I, I think that that is clearly one of the big concerns about trees. And I don't know, I've driven, I've been out there many, many times. I see a number of trees already cut down. I don't know what that's all about. Um, and I don't know how many other trees have been taken down in that area. So, uh, that again is something I, I just want to be clear that obviously that's not us taking any of those trees down. We don't own that property. But, uh, I, I did notice that there were a fair amount of trees that were cut down with a chainsaw, um, on the end of those roads, so.
Question.
I, oh, go ahead.
So if right now, it's like the Kelzers or whoever the property owner happens to be, says, I'm just going to clear up all the trees. Is there anything legally we can do to stop them at this point if they went and did that?
No.
So they technically have the right to clear up them all down regardless and say, well, fine, if this is going to be a problem for building, I'll just clear up them down and then they can deal with it, they have to give them later.
Except eighteen percent slopes.
Which they don't.
But what is deep slopes?
Right.
But they don't really have any of that there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, I just have, I mean, uh, I have, I don't know if it's necessarily a question. I share the same views and thoughts as the mayor in regards to the traffic and trees as huge concerns. But my, my other concern that from, um, Liz's presentation was the Jonathan Association. Um, I look at that as a brewing problem because, uh, from my understanding, they would be the only development within Clover Ridge that would not fall under the association. And, um, I don't know, didn't, I don't know, is the Sagewood two under an association as it stands? Is it not under association, but will get set up later when the third possibly develops?
This is, this is a major issue that came up under Sagewood one and Sagewood two. So Sagewood one and Sagewood two are not part of the Jonathan Association. That's one of the reasons that they built that playground themselves, uh, between the two additions. You know, honestly, it makes absolutely no sense that it's in the, not in the Jonathan Association. And at the time that the development went forward, we actually went forward as a city and recommended to Jonathan. They accepted into the Jonathan Association and their board at the time said no. And so we can't force them to accept it into Jonathan. Um, and so now we have two additions now in the Clover Ridge neighborhood that quite honestly, probably use all the Jonathan amenities, just like everybody else that's in Jonathan, but don't pay dues for it. But those two additions do have an association. It's just not, it's just not Jonathan.
So, okay, so I guess I'm like a little confused because in the packet, there is an email from Melissa Campen through, it sounds like Jonathan, asking for it not to be opted out.
Yes.
They have changed their minds now?
Yes, so in the middle of the whole process, after Sagewood two was platted, uh, they, they had a whole new board, uh, that got elected. And the new board, uh, decided that they wanted Sagewood in there. Uh, they came to the city of Chaska and asked if they, if they could force to put Sagewood one and two in there. And basically their answer was, it's too late. They already created an association, they already built the playground. So the, the answer is yes, it should be in Jonathan. The, uh, the problem is, is that Jonathan at the time made the decision not to, and it was almost sort of too late.
Uh, I, I just foresee this as a problem, but I'll digress.
Well, it's, it's, it's absolutely, I mean, it's, it's one of the things we have to be careful about though, is because it's a private association, we don't really have any control over it. Um, but I do not disagree with you that that was maybe not the best decision in the world.
Yeah, okay. And so that, that's my good, otherwise I'll leave it for participants to.
And, and again, clearly that, that was not our decision. And now if one reading through this, because this is not even, this is being annexed, they don't have to be. This one really, I don't know that they have an option to even claim it, other than, I, I don't, I don't know how they would.
Yeah, and quite frankly, now that they've already created an association down in the other areas, now it makes sense to put it as part of that association.
Right.
Um, so it's, it's, that part of it is, is something that, uh, it's unfortunate that Jonathan didn't accept it in because I think it would have been a natural extension.
And the other question too is that did, it sent, read from reading the packet, it sounded like the, um, the fact that it was also in Lake Town Township also had something to do with it too, right?
Right, so it's not in, it was not, this parcel today is not in the city of Chaska. So they can't govern it.
Right.
So once it's annexed, but like said now, because the other two were refused, that would be even crazier to make that piece of it and the other two, other two, uh, developments part, not part of it. That would even make it more confusing.
Well, is it more confusing or is it better than having even a larger chunk of it not? I mean, that's the other piece of it, right?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess you could look at it either way. Uh, in either way, it, it seems like at least some of the damage has already been done.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Because I, I mean, they're, they've already built the playground in this one. They're going to build one in the next one. There's really, the, the only trails will really be the sidewalks. I don't think that there are any trails from what I, I mean, again, we're looking at thirty thousand foot. So there are, so there are no trails. So there's, I mean, it's not like there'd be, they, they have their own playgrounds and it would make a lot of sense to walk all the way to the Jonathan ones to utilize those. So they'll have, if there were no playgrounds and, and stuff like that, and had it get right over to some of their, the Jonathan trails, yeah, I can see that. But these are, will be all sidewalks in this area that, I don't know. That was a, that was the decision made back a few years ago that.
Yeah, what, I think it was three years ago.
Yeah.
Two or three years ago. But I mean, it's fair to say Jonathan came back after the fact and wanted to try to change that. But by the point, time they did, it was just too late.
All right, council, any more questions? I can't see everybody, so you, you gotta say yea or nay or, yeah, I do, or if I don't hear anything, or I'm going to move forward.
I'm just going to add, I mean, I think it's been said, I do want to make sure those that are listening and, and going to speak up here in a short while, um, understand that, you know, now you've heard and including myself, I think the traffic flow is, is a concern. And I, I think I hope that the developer looks to reduce that and fix that with some creative ideas. As, as the mayor pointed out, could be an option. Um, I can clearly understand that. Um, you know, so I, I appreciate that. You know, as I, I do also want to just say, you know, thank you to those who, and, and hope this is true for the upcoming comments. Uh, I did find, you know, some of the presentations that were included with the package to be very informative and summarized. Um, and, you know, I, that's appreciated too because it's, it's important to understand what the concerns are coming into these meetings. And it's not always easy to get a good concise message from kind of a neighborhood group that has, um, varying opinions. But, you know, I just want to echo that, you know, I understand the traffic. Uh, the school thing, you know, I've read that a few times, that, that's a tough one because it's, it's a chicken and egg problem a little bit. Because if you don't build the houses, you don't build schools, and if you don't build schools, you don't build houses. Um, you know, so that's a little bit of a, a challenge. But I can understand the concern with, you know, the school, uh, serving that school in that area too. So just wanted to throw that out there and, um, um, you know, I'm hopeful that we'll have some good conversation here from the neighbors as well.
You know, one point I'll bring up that I forgot to bring up before, in regards to the school. So we did talk with Nate Slendy, the principal, uh, of the, the school. And, you know, having lived out in that area for the last almost twenty years, um, you know, there are time periods when, uh, you know, during the school, well, the ten minutes before school and the ten minutes after school, uh, that are challenging, uh, out there. And there are things that, that we think can be done to help split traffic that goes for drop off and to also deal with patrol crossings differently that we think could have a, a pretty significant impact. Regardless, this is to me, regardless of this development goes forward or not, this is something I think would be good to, to deal with. Uh, so we are working with the, the principal at Clover Ridge to, uh, look at some options and go under what's called a safe routes to school, uh, program, uh, to seek some dollars to be able to put some study towards, uh, how can you, uh, achieve the objective of, uh, reducing the amount of traffic that goes around the school, uh, for drop off and really make those time periods move a lot smoother regardless of any development that happens. So that, that is something that I think was positive for us in this process to connect up with, uh, the principal there.
Yeah, and I, I, I just want to touch a little bit on the school too. Um, we work closely with the school and, and they look at our com plans and they, they know what, what's slated for development. They understand that, that was part of the reason that they moved forward with, you know, wanting to try to build a new elementary. Um, between that and, like I said, I, I know that some of you don't feel this is a small of development, but this is a, probably a smaller development by standards compared to what's happening around us between, uh, Victoria and Carver. So there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of new homes being built and there will be, um, a, a lot of changes in the school, but that, they, uh, we work closely with them. They're all fully aware of what's happening. So this, this shouldn't be any surprise to anybody in the school that these developments are being, uh, done here. So I just, I just wanted to be clear, we meet with, we meet the school every two months and we just talk about what's happening in our district so that all four cities and the school district in Carver County, so that the school and, and we as well, understand what's happening, uh, around, uh, in, in each community. So, so we do work closely with the school on that. And, and unfortunately, the, the referendum failed, um, although Chaska as a city supported it, was the only, was the only city before that, that did support the, um, referendum of the building of the school and the operating budget and, and everything. So, um, we'll just have to see what happens. And when they decide now, they have a new superintendent, so, um, I'm sure that she'll need to get, um, her feet under to figure out what's going on and what's the best time to look forward for another referendum. So, and now we got the COVID, so life has changed a lot, so. All right, last call, council? All right, the only thumb up, I saw John, but I don't hear anything. So again, uh, folks at home, um, Kevin, our moderator will be, um, moderating and go through the process about raising your hand when you have something. Again, if there's a spokesman that you have that kind of covers all your concerns, uh, that is, that is, uh, we always, that's always a good thing. But like I said, I want to make sure that if you got something different or you have a point that you don't feel was quite, uh, brought forward, please, uh, don't hesitate to, uh, bring that forward. So with that, Kevin, I'll turn it over to you and let you kind of start, who, who, who's the first one up to, uh, speak?
All right, the first one that we have up is, uh, iPad, so I'm going to, I'll review here.
Steve, Steve Kelzer.
Uh, Steve.
Uh, hello, city council and mayor. Um, I just had a quick, um, thing I wanted to say about the trees that were cut down. Uh, I had talked to DR Horton, um, uh, before we finalized everything. And there were six trees that were cut down last fall by me. Um, three of them were dead and, and three of them were badly damaged by storms. And so I have been managing in the property for forty some years and, uh, I'm real critical or sensitive on the cutting a tree down. So that was my last, um, thing I, I was going to do to the property. The lumber, or the trees had been sawed into the lumber and, and the, uh, rest will be cut into firewood. But they were trees that were not, um, not going to make it. And so that's my explanation, I thought I'd bring that to the city council there. Thank you.
Steve, I'm glad you did that. I mean, that just helps that clarification and that's a problem, especially, you know, when we're looking at them in the winter. We don't know what tree's live and what tree's dead. But you've been on that property all your life, you know that. So thank you for clarifying that, it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next person we have to speak is Wade Sorenson.
Good evening, Wade, welcome.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, council members. I do have a presentation that I'm going to try and share if I, if I'm able to do that. It gives me a, here we go. And a version of this may have been in your packet as well. I hope you see my screen at this point.
We do, I do.
Yep.
All right. So again, now to start background, my name's Wade Sorenson. I've been in Sophia Drive for about sixteen or sixteen and a half years. Uh, so I've known this area quite well. So, and I'm speaking here on behalf of a few other neighbors, uh, not all of them, but I definitely have spoken with a lot of neighbors and I'm trying to summarize a lot of our concerns. So let's, I've got a deck here and I realize this is a, a concept plan, so I'm not going to drill through everything. But I do want to cut, cover a lot of these points. So as we look at this development, in general, what is the point of the city to do development? So I've taken all these points from the comprehensive plan. No, does the development enhance and maintain the quality of life for the citizens of Chaska? Key, key question I have. Does it have a positive impact on our quality of life? Second point. Third point, does it preserve our natural resources? Is there any kind of preservation happening? I think these are three key questions that you have to ask yourselves as you look at this plan. So the previous slide was my expectations of you, the city. Now, let's talk about us, residents. So, yes, when some of us moved in here, there were signs. When some moved in early, there may not have been signs. Some of our purchase agreements were made long before in, into the houses, right? So some of the comments previously that all the rezoning had, was done before people bought, that's not necessarily true. So you have to look carefully at the timeline. In any case, in May of two thousand and two, when the planning commission approved this development, Clover Preserve, second addition, the text in the planning commission documents, and I've read them and I have copies of them, right? Talk about Sophia Drive connecting to the south, connecting to Cloverfield Circle. And I've got some, the actual details from the next slide. In September of that year, after you guys made the agreement with the Kelzer family, which I understand, there was still the comments made about sewer system that still limited the scope of what was supposed to be developed. The city explicitly stated, even in the twenty forty plan, it still says this, that the development is allowed to the extent that it can be supported by a gravity fed sewer. And if you look at the topography out here, it's very obvious what that area is. Because the whole portion that is currently listed as like the north portion is substantially lower. So there's no way that was ever going to be fed by a gravity fed, supported by a gravity fed sewer. So that statement is critical to limiting the scale of the development that's possible on this property, as long as the city makes this statement. And the third point here is about the traffic. And yeah, I'm not going to belabor this because I know that there's going to be a traffic study done. So my key expectation of the city is that your policy, which is a thousand vehicles per day on a residential street, non-collective, that's the massive you would allow the development to do. Realizing that all the traffic from Sagewood Phase Three is bottling to the one street, that's Clover Preserve Drive, which is not a collector. And Sagewood one and two, DR Horton's own traffic study of that development from one and two, already have Clover Preserve Drive at a thousand vehicles per day. So every house that you put out here in, in Case Three is going to drive Clover Preserve Drive over a thousand vehicles a day. Okay? So I want to understand how you're going to rationalize the approval of this property with your other standards on traffic, okay? So, and I realize that's going to be the next discussion we have in a couple of months. But be prepared to discuss that because all those neighbors are going to want to have a very good explanation of that. Now, this can be solved by adding an extra exit, right? Get this traffic out to the south. Everybody's going to go out to Angler to hit two twelve, right? So why that's not being. So why that's not being talked about, why the proposal has a, kind of capping it off with a cul-de-sac, I don't understand that. Because everybody's going to want to go to Angler. So, you know, that's my perspective on some of these key expectations. So let's get in the Wayback Machine and go back to 2000, 2002. It was kind of hard for me to get this picture, but this is the original concept plan for Clover Ridge. Okay? So realize, here, let me jump ahead here. This area in yellow, this is, I put in Clover Drive, Clover, Sophia Drive. Again, this is a rough sketch based on roads are a little different, this is the concept plan. A couple of key points here. The area in yellow to the left side of the line for Lake Town Township. The scope that was considered for Clover Ridge is very small. And incidentally, this is exactly the area that today is called is the south portion. The other parts out here, these words are kind of hard to read, it says green belt. So this is what we, like the initial property owners, the initial guys that bought lots on this development, this was our expectation of what the scope of any future development was going to be. Right? So Sophia Drive was mentioned, it's going to loop to the south, connect to what is now Cloverfield Circle. That's what was defined. Now, in 2002, sorry, in 2000, the memo from back then, Kevin was the planner, the memo explicitly states that the limits of Clover Ridge would be defined by the green belt to the west. Okay? I'm not making this up. This is documented in these files. Okay? So the green belt, the green belt clearly called out the scope of Clover Ridge to the west. And this is what it will look like. So to kind of compare these two, this area here is essentially what's, what was initially in scope. You guys added in 2002, 2003, 2004, whenever the agreements were made, this area up here, but you didn't change your statement on the sewer. If you look at the topography, this area right here is much, much lower than the area that was called the south portion. So for us, all of us sitting here on Sophia Drive, we looked at this property, it's pretty clear based on your documents, how much you were planning to develop. So now for it to come across with this much development, when the initial scope here is in yellow, you know, that, I don't understand how you can justify that. How this is, this is not aligned, it's not consistent with the 2040 comprehensive plan as you've just mentioned. Okay? So I just want that to be clear, because I know a lot of this, this first presentation was pretty much telling us homeowners what we should have known and why we should have known this was coming, but there's a lot of facts here that would point to otherwise. Now, and again, I understand this is a concept plan and you guys are going to approve this, you're going to put some more comments on there and it's going to go forward, but, you know, just calling out these issues, traffic, that's our biggest concern. Again, Sage Wood Phase Two traffic study already called out Clover Preserve Drive is at a thousand vehicles a day. So I need to understand how you, the city, is going to justify adding any houses back here if it's going to put Clover Preserve Drive, which is not a collector, over a thousand vehicles per day? I mean, I just don't get it. And again, if you're going to put any three houses and you've already talked about this in China, right now, it's seventy-five percent are likely going on Sophia Drive. That's already been discussed, I appreciate that. So, you know, all your comments are helpful, I understand that you understand our concerns. You know, and it's just interesting looking at how D.R. Horton's dominance, right? Phase One is a little cul-de-sac. Phase Two doesn't touch Phase One. Phase Three doesn't touch Phase Two. It's very interesting how it has allowed D.R. Horton to kind of manipulate the system. The last comment here on the future development, you know, besides Sage Wood Phase Three, there's a lot of talk about multifamily apartments, high density residential on the north side of Clover Ridge. All of that traffic is going to come where? It's going to come down Clover Ridge Drive, but in the morning, that's all backed up by the school because the two collector roads in this development are both crisscrossed at the school. So I know some of you have driven by the school at even in the morning when it's in session. It's a mess, it's, it's bad. There's a fundamental design flaw here in Clover Ridge neighborhood. So all the traffic on the collector streets stops right there at the school every morning. So what's going to happen with this new traffic from the park building? It's going to hang the right and it's going to go down Clover Preserve Drive as well, the same road that we're all exiting on, that all of our kids have to walk across to get to Clover Ridge Elementary. That's a recipe for disaster. And again, without having a better comprehensive view of a long-term plan, it's going to be a long-term problem. And what's going to happen next is you're going to start talking about traffic calling and other devices. Those are reactive controls to a bad design. So you need to understand a long-term plan here and right now, it's not well understood. The traffic flow, the developments, it's, it's being done in piecemeal, which I'll get to in a second, is actually kind of outlawed by the city ordinances. And so again, I realize that this is a concept plan and, you know, you're going to move forward with this, I'm a realist, I understand that. So my request, first point is really balancing traffic between Sophia and Clover Preserve, Clover Preserve Lane to be precise, which that's already been talked about. Second thing is I definitely want to hear you, the city, assure me that you're not going to ignore your own requirements about traffic, that you're going to follow those rules and ensure that this development doesn't push neighborhood traffic roads beyond a thousand vehicles per day. And to ensure that, I'm asking that when you request D.R. Horton's traffic study, which has been requested already, make sure that they include Clover Preserve Drive and Cloverfield Drive and Schoolmaster, because those are neighborhood streets that are going to bear the brunt of this traffic. And lastly, this is kind of an obvious point, but I believe the traffic engineers are likely going to say that the physical counts is going to be required. If that's required, you're going to have to wait at least a year to do that, given the pandemic, given the fact that nobody's driving their car right now. So if physical counts are required, I hope you would require that that not be done until it's realistic levels. The bottom of the slide talks about, you know, if I was, you know, in charge of everything, what I think you need to look at is a new exit, either to Angler or Victoria Drive or Pioneer Trail, there needs to be another exit. I mean, everything is being funneled through too few streets here in Clover Ridge and everybody wants to go down to Angler, hit two twelve or hit Hyde, whatever the case may be, that's where everybody goes. And that's the problem that we have in this, in this development right now today. Let's cover the timeline, I'm not going to carry the slide much. I assume you guys are aware of your own traffic policy of a thousand vehicles per day and why it is that case? So again, the key point here is, this is the Chaska, you know, policy from the comprehensive plan, that local streets are less than a thousand vehicles per day. Just for your reference, I included this. This is a copy from D.R. Horton's traffic study from Phase One and Two. They're calling out Clover Preserve Drive is already going to be at a thousand vehicles. One, this is, this is a thousand, so this is referring to. Every house in Sage Wood in Phase Three is going to hit Clover Preserve Drive. I'm telling you this right now, it's not that hard to understand, look at the map. Every house that you approve here is going to add ten trips onto this number here. So it's going to go to a thousand to eighteen hundred. And how is that going to be approved? How can you possibly prove that without forcing some other exit? I don't believe any other development in Chaska has ever been approved that puts all the traffic on a non-collector street anywhere near that number. I've had a public records request out to the city for that information, I haven't got anything back yet, I don't expect it, because again, the fact is, you've got this massive development buried behind a couple of other big streets. So that's the problem here and that's the flaw in this whole design. This slide here, again, I put in the new traffic numbers, you're not going to trust it anyway because I'm not a traffic engineer, but this is what the numbers are going to look like when they come back with their study. But I'll wait till, until we look at the next meeting to review these numbers. Last study on traffic impacts, again, Clover Ridge Elementary, I put the second bullet point here I want to focus on. Clover Ridge Elementary is the anchor of this development. This is a family-friendly neighborhood, everybody in this development is, you know, they have younger kids, they're very active families, kids are walking, running, it is an active area. You can't be chubbing this much traffic in here. So I'm asking you, be very careful when you look at the traffic numbers for this development because there's kids everywhere. And if any of you live in this area, I'm not sure if you do or not, it's, trust me, it's crazy around here. Kids are everywhere. Okay? Couple of, you know, just to put it in perspective, this development, this property, this parcel of land, you know, if you went to the west, out, out the west side to Victoria Drive, it's only three hundred feet from the edge of this property. Going to the south, the Kelser property, again, not what's proposed right now, but the southern border of this property is two thousand feet down to Angler. And it's about twenty-two hundred feet from here, hitting right up to the Christ Victorious Church intersection. Okay, so there are ways to get this traffic in and out of here and, you know, you're going to have to look at those options because you can't shove it all down Sophia and Clover Preserve Lane, it's just not possible. So you got to start looking at these options because there's just no other way. Long-term, it was already mentioned tonight, more of the stuff that's zoned one way can get changed, these roads need to be there eventually. At some point, you're going to have to bite the bullet and build the roads, everybody wants to go to Angler, I would encourage you to put it to Angler, but, you know, I'll leave that for the next round of designs, but just keep that in the back of your mind that there is no capacity here for all this traffic. So what are you going to do with this? Last couple of slides, I've already talked about long-term planning and I think that is not happening here in Clover Ridge. But if we look at your own zoning ordinance, two fifty-two, there's two key sentences here I want to call out. The first one essentially says existing homes get priority, right? Each new subdivision, you know, the future development has to be adhered into the existing. So basically what this says is, those of us on Sophia Drive, we get precedence over what you're looking at here. Now, I understand that you have a lot of money on the line here, but that doesn't mean it's right. So you made this deal with the Kelser family and I understand that they have a right to sell the property, but you don't have the right to send all that traffic down Sophia Drive. Second of all, the second paragraph, second sentence, I'm sorry, is even more important. Piecemeal planning gives you disconnected plats, poor circulation of traffic, an undesirable atmosphere. That's what you're going to hear about from me and from everybody else in the neighborhood, is all the risks that we're looking at here by doing this. You know, Clover Ridge was initially designed with one thing, you add on this, now you're going to add on something else, you know? Even looking at the Sage Wood, whether or not it's in John there or not, I mean, that, you're making problems for the future. You've got to solve these problems, you've got to stop passing the buck to the future generation, right? Solve these problems, do it right, right now, as best, I beg of you to do it right. We've already talked about this. Last big point here, woodland preservation. Again, nothing here, I'm not making this stuff up, I'm quoting you, the city, and your position here. When this agreement was made with Mr. Kelser, Clarence Kelser, right, he was a big guy, big fan of the trees. The city's resolution stated explicitly the woods on Kelser property are to be preserved. What happened? I'll show you a picture on the next slide. Even on this presentation, even on this proposal, D.R. Horton is saying they're going to take out sixty percent of the trees. So how exactly is the city preserving any of your natural resources? Okay? So to put it into perspective, on the left side, this is pre-Sage Wood One and Two. The box in yellow, those trees are actually owned by residents of Sophia Drive. So the conservation easements that Liz mentioned, as far as a way to save the trees, that was actually done by Mr. Matt Smalley over here on Sophia Drive. He put those easements in, not D.R. Horton. This was Sophia Drive saving the trees. D.R. Horton cut them all down, right? Let's be honest about this. D.R. Horton, I mean, look at this picture, you can't tell me that they are being, doing a good job and that the City Council, you guys are not preserving the natural resources here in the city of Chaska. So I'm just, I'd love to hear your take on how good of a job the city's doing at preserving these trees. Lastly, again, as we mentioned, the sewer line. It's been explicitly stated by the city that the development is only permitted for a gravity fed sewer system. That really boxes in this development. It was repeated in one of the memos to this planning commission. Again, the delineation of this area was dictated by the sewer capacity. And yet, if you read the city engineer's memo, the proposed area cannot be served by a gravity sewer and it's going to require a new lift station. So again, I'm not making this up, I'm calling out where this development does not meet the standards that you guys have, you know, set are critical to the city. They've been documented standards. To conclude my little rant here, right? Many aspects, you know, going back to my first slide, I had three, three points. Does this development enhance and maintain the high quality of life to citizens of Chaska? Well, anybody on Sophia Drive, Clover Preserve Drive, Cloverfield Circle, Clover, Clover Preserve Drive, Cloverfield Drive, all, all these, everything is Cloverfield something, right? So, sorry. Anybody that lives here currently, that's been a resident here for Chaska in this area for the last five, ten, fifteen years, there's no way this enhances our quality of life. It brings in more traffic, it hurts it. So there is no positive impact by doing this development. Does it preserve our natural resources? I can jump back to the previous slide if you have any questions on that. So as this is proposed right now, the answer for all these is obviously no. Right? So in my mind, this development shouldn't proceed. Again, I know that you're going to approve this because it's a concept plan, so all I'm going to say is, I need you to assure me that you're going to follow your own standards when it comes to traffic. And are you going to follow your standards when it comes to natural resources? Or are you going to, it's going to roll over and let this builder dictate what's going to happen? So that is my proposal, that's my presentation. I appreciate your time. If there's any questions, please let me know.
Questions from the council?
Not so much a question as much as a concern in regards to having an alternative exit out onto Victoria Drive or Angler. My concern would be that that might not be what you guys actually would want and desire in the long run. And I only say that from the position of, you know, someone coming down Victoria Drive, they have to access, you know, the more southern part of Clover Ridge neighborhood, they're maybe not going to go on, you know, where Christ Victorious Church is and come down that way, or maybe go all the way down to Angler. They might take that drive and cut through your guys' neighborhood road to get to their destination faster. You might be asking for more unwanted traffic on your road by making another access point. That, that would be my only concern with something like that.
So I mean, I could see that on the Victoria Drive option. I mean, again, the Angler side is really where the traffic should be routed to. I mean, that's where honestly, everybody goes. And if you go out to Victoria Drive, honestly, where are you going to go? North to Victoria, out to McConia, that's not a huge destination, I'm going to guess, for people in this development. North to Victoria, out to McConia, that's not a huge destination, I'm going to guess, for people in this development. So I think we can look, I mean, that may not be a good idea, but somehow, there's got to be another exit here. And the cheapest alternative is going to be to dump it out to Victoria Drive. The right way to do it, I think, is going to send it down to Angler. And long-term, nobody can deny that an exit to Angler is what's really required here.
I highly doubt you'd get that County Road 11, you, they, they would not allow an access point right next to railroad tracks, blind spots, and turning and that. I, I'll just, I mean, I'm throwing that out, out of just past experience. That, that one would never happen there, and the topography there is, is really, really steep to come up to that road. So I, I-
I think access to Angler would be very difficult to get through the county too.
So, so Matt, Matt, to that question though, this is what I don't quite understand. So I've heard this a couple of times from city, city resources, let's say, that it's difficult to get an exit onto Angler. Because it's a county road. But yet, I just look at like, was it Delwell? You guys put an exit onto Minnesota Highway 41 for Delwell, right?
We did, it's a, it's a-
We did in the state of Minnesota.
The state of Minnesota did, but-
That's not us.
So the, the issue-
So you're going to tell me it's easier to get the state to approve it than it is to get the county? And if you look down at Angler Boulevard, where Creek Road gets it comes from the south, there's already an intersection there.
Yeah.
It would be so easy.
Couple of things you have to understand about Angler though, is that they're doing, the county's doing a major transportation study there now. One of the things that's going to disappear from this is going to be Creek Road. And the accesses that, the accesses that the county are going to want to see is to try to funnel them to one location, which is the intersection of Clover Ridge Drive and Angler. Because that's a signalized intersection, and they don't want to try to put accesses for residential development in between two signalized intersections there. So the reality is, given what's going to happen on Angler, that would be very difficult to get an access onto that road.
Well, in that case then, what about routing it to the other obvious spot, which is the road that already exists, which is where a stream data center is? That road already exists. It's even shorter to get to that than it is to get to Angler. I mean, again, I'm just, I'm going to leave this to the next phase. I'm just giving you some options to think about. Because this traffic's can't, you can't all route 80 houses of traffic down these two roads, it's just not going to happen.
I think one of the other things to think about too is, it's pretty unusual to see a neighborhood, especially, and I get it, it feels large in the Clover Ridge perspective, but 85 units to have that have its own separate entrance into a neighborhood and not be connected to anything else would be really not something that you typically see, because it's, it's a pretty small neighborhood.
But no, but you could be dumping out Sophia Drive, Sage Wood 1 and, well, at least 2, and other parts of Clover Ridge could all be using this as an alternative exit. I mean, what happens if Clover Ridge has a sinkhole right by Fort, by Angler Boulevard? What's going to happen? I mean, why, this development should have a second exit to the south.
Well, we've had that section of road closed in the past for construction, and everything's looped to the north then. It, it goes up to Hunter Mark then.
Okay, well, in any case, I mean, I'll just wait for, you know, the next round of this, when you guys have the numbers back on the traffic. And it's going to be pretty obvious then what the, where the issues are. So I don't need to, you know, waste everyone's time here tonight. So any other questions on what I presented?
You know, I, I would just add, you know, you talked about that we're, we're not doing the greatest job planning, which I will probably just disagree with you on that, but that's okay, we can agree to disagree. But putting a residential neighborhood into a commercial site, now that's a big mistake. Because that's, that's where you'll see semis cutting through there, because their GPS will say it's faster to go that way to the golf course, so I just don't, why it sounds like it makes sense, I don't know that I would feel comfortable connecting a commercial road to, to, through a residential site.
And I understand it, and I, I get that, now, I guess, my take on that is, today, we get all kinds of semis, now, it's the construction traffic for Sage Wood Phase 2. That keeps coming through our neighborhood.
But that's temporary.
Exactly, but it's, it shouldn't be coming through our neighborhood at all. So I can understand that, that perspective. But I'm just trying to figure out a solution to this problem that you're going to have. So again, I'll, I'll wait until the next round of this, because I'm not the engineer here.
All right, well, thanks, and you definitely are well-prepared, I appreciate that, thank you for that. And we will look into that, and I, I myself want to see these traffic numbers.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm in that area a lot, my daughter lives around there. And I guess I just, it's hard for me to say that there's that many cars there ever, and I'm there all kinds of different times of the day, but I, I don't count them either, so I don't know.
Well, I mean, what you got to do is, come by about 8 o'clock in the morning when school's in session.
Well, I don't, I'll take you to every elementary school in Chaska, and they're all crazy around closing and opening. That's just a given.
In case, yeah. We can have a discussion later, so, I appreciate that, thanks.
All right, any other questions on the presentation? There is another question from Travis, but if there's no questions on the presentation-
Council are all good? Again, I can't see you, so I'm assuming I'm, everyone's-
There's thumbs ups coming from everybody.
Okay, all right.
All right, Travis, you were the next one with your hand raised there, so you are unmuted.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, for this opportunity. I'll try not to redo anything the way it's just done. Just to do a little bit more specific side of things, and kind of highlighting some of the topics that were brought up. But really comes down to, what was the logic that was used in 2000, 2002 timeframe, when the agreement was made with the Kelzer family, to divvy up their, their plats in order for them to be able to obviously pay off the assessment to the city? And what kind of flexibility is, is there? Because if we go back and reference back to Liz's map from the original presentation, there is the southern portion of that plat that is not included in this, in, in Sage Wood 3, because it's still part of the, the green belt. So, you know, obviously, we've talked about the sewer and the gravity and the, and the lift station needed. But it really comes down to what flexibility is, is allowed to be able to really do what is right for this development. And like Wade said, we know this is going to get passed, but the question is, what is it the city's going to do to make this more plausible, more appealing towards those, those residents of Sophia Drive and Clover Preserve Lane? Because we're going to get that traffic, and, and Mayor, like you mentioned, it would be great if it just looped those two streets together. But in order to do that, you've got to go into the green belt. So going back to what flexibility is allowed, to make it right versus Dr. Horton just cramming it into the space that's allowed, that was set up almost 20 years ago, before Sophia was even built, before Sage Wood 2 came along. So we're now 20 years later, let's make this right, versus just cramming something in that was set up many years ago. And Wade did kind of touch upon this, well, actually, in the same, same context is, we just mentioned that there's going to be no traffic, no, no entrance into either Highway 11 or onto Angler. So pretty much everything else on that green belt is landlocked and is never going to get developed. So Kelzer's never going to be able to sell another piece of their property with the way it's set up, because everything's cul-de-sac, the dead end. So you're pretty much handcuffing him from being able to do anything else with this property, ever. So this gets back down to the future planning. Let's make sure we take the time and actually plan for it properly, versus just cramming something into a spot that was set up 20 years ago. And just touching on the tree preservation. The agreement that Kelzer made, and he's always been a proponent of preserving the trees, and you saw the pictures in Wade's presentation on what was actually taken out in Sage, in Sage, in Stage 2. That's my backyard. Now I've got this huge void that used to be full of trees, that's just now a void, and now tree, house paths that I see. It, not ideal, but unfortunately, that's resolution wasn't brought forward to anybody, it wasn't brought forward in Stage 2 of an agreement that the city had with Kelzer for Sophia Drive. So that could have swayed some of the decisions and, and pushed the city, both planning and the city council, to change their mind about the direction that Dr. Horton took with, with Phase 2. So I recommend, and I do plead, that we actually try to make right the wrong that we did with Stage 2, and actually fix it with Phase 3. And I'll just leave it with, you know, some wise, a wise farmer that I have had contact with throughout this ordeal, made a comment, and it really just kind of stuck with me, which is, I found you can't fight City Hall, you can only make them responsible. And that's what we're here for. We're here to make sure that the city is responsible for doing what's right for both the the citizens, as well as those people that are, are affected by the decisions that were made in 2002, have the assessment placed the way it was. So they're only selling because they have the assessment. I think if we were to ask them right now if they'd want to sell, the answer would be no. They're needing to sell because of the assessment. So let's, let's go back and think about what is right versus what's necessary. Uh, thank you.
Well, I, I guess I, I think we've talked it already, but they're selling the land because of the assessments was right. But that was how they had it laid out, that that would be the parcel to save the farm. So, you know, that was a decision that was made back in 2002 by them and the city council at that time, so.
Well, and I, I think it's important to point out that it wasn't by accident that it's exactly where it is.
Right.
The reason it is, is because that's where sewer capacity can be extended to from that neighborhood.
But not by gravity though.
That, I mean, that's the, well, I'm not saying gravity, I'm saying sewer capacity can, can go to that, to the edge of that parcel. And so in 2002, when that was developed, there was, it was not an accident that that was the exact parcel that was chosen. It was because that was the parcel that was able to be developed with that neighborhood.
Also, just a point on that, Matt, that Sophia, the whole western half of Clover Ridge is not on gravity sewer. Though Sophia, that whole area is on, already on a lift station. Most of the western half of Clover Ridge, it was found, couldn't be serviced. And so a lot of those existing areas on the west, northwest parts of Clover Ridge, are all on a existing lift station. And so that original thought from 2000, 2002, once they got into the details of it, even the, those existing parcels or existing areas aren't on gravity sewer. Sophia is not on gravity sewer.
But yet, the comp plan still recommends and requires gravity fed? So I guess that's the part where it's like, what?
Well, the, the comp, what, what the comp plan is doing is, the comp plan's indicating what the desired outcomes of trying to provide utilities there. But the overall area that's, that's developed, or put in the comp plan, is very consistent with what's being talked about here today. I think Kevin's right, back in, you know, the early 2000s when Clover Ridge was put together, the intent was try, and, and it is with any development that we do, is try to get as much of it on gravity fed as possible. And if it isn't, then obviously, lift stations are needed. I'd say we probably have less lift stations in Chaska than most cities do anywhere. Because we're very cognizant of how gravity goes, but that was the intent for the entire neighborhood. And that just never came to fruition, including on Sophia.
So, and going back to, you know, my original comment, which was the, what flexibility is there with the, the southern portion of that parcel that's, that's still retaining part of the green belt, that's not part of Phase 3? What, what alternatives are there to be able to go into that, as, as the mayor mentioned initially, to be able to loop, boot Clover Preserve Lane and Sophia Drive, to be able to balance the traffic?
Yeah, I think, I, I think Kevin can probably address this better, but in general, there's two things again, that go against that southern portion, is first of all, the sewer can't extend there now, gravity or lift station. And the, the second is that the soils are much different down there than, than they are up on the northern part. Kevin, I don't know if you have anything to add?
That was the southern portion, the very southern tip of the eastern portion. I'm talking the southern portion of the west side of the creek. So the agricultural side of things, right now, it's, it's a half a field, half of it's agriculture, half of it's trees. So, and that was retained within the green belt, within the initial agreement with the Kelzers. So what options are available to be able to change the agreement with the Kelzers, to be able to still allow them to sell and pay their assessment, but then also make it right now that we actually have a developer that's wanting to do something that feels like it's the right thing for Chaska, but as it's, as it's currently plotted out, is not the right thing for Sophia Drive?
You'd have to look at that area in some detail. And I think part of the transportation analysis is going to try and, I think, get at where those connection points need to be, should be. And I think we'll have to take a look at all the options, and I think that's what we're being asked to do, and I think that's kind of what we need to think about. And, and the developer needs to think about, how can you do this? How can you trade off different areas and come up with the right answer? And I, today I can't tell you, because I'm, I'm not really familiar enough with that lower area to say how far, where, where does it go from okay to not okay? From a development perspective, in terms of soils, water table, all those other pieces, I don't know.
And then the agreement is that there's never going to be a residential, sorry, rural residential entrance off of either Victoria Drive or Angler Boulevard into that green belt space. Because right now, we're saying we can't talk to the county or the, because they're not going to let something in, to be able to either have access to the south or to the west.
Well, I think there's a difference between rural residential and like a, a major development. Because Kevin, the zoning over there is one per 40?
Or per 40.
Or per 40, so, so one every 10 acres. How that access would be provided off, they're probably off an existing access that already exists there, but you know, that's, the zoning's, you know, basically guiding it for those 10, 10, or four units on 10-acre parcels.
All right, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And then the next one up is Matt Smalley.
Okay, good evening, welcome.
Kevin, can you hear me?
Yep, you, we can hear you.
Thanks, hey, thanks for giving me a few minutes, guys, appreciate it. I'm not going to hammer on points, let everybody else else here, just a few things. One, one question, and then just three points that I think did not get addressed. The question first, I noticed, so by the way, I live on the very west side of Sophia Drive. And built there back in 2003. I happened to glance out in the Kelzer pasture where all the trees are, there were stakes with flags back there with the word "road" written on it. And curious why that's happening, number one, given the fact that we're in content plan. Is that a presumptive close by Dr. Horton? Is that something city-issued? Because it literally extends, if you go east to west, the, the flags kind of continue down into the pasture where the plot is where the content plan goes. So that's question number one, I'll let you guys address that now.
Liz, maybe you could address that?
Yeah, I can answer that. Dr. Horton did stake out kind of a general right-of-way line within the wooded area. We did do kind of a initial walkthrough of the tree area, just to do an initial assessment of kind of where the trees are in relation to their concept plan right-of-way. So it was merely just for reference points. So it's nothing that was put out there as kind of a, this is where it is technically. It was just for us to use as reference.
It's definitely progress though, isn't it? It's definitely progress and definitely presumptive, but I'll, I'll let that one go for now.
Well, well, I'm going to stop you there, whoa, 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 I'm going to stop you there. I mean, they have to have an idea where, where there's going to go about their layout, so just be- So just because there's stakes out there doesn't mean anything other than that this concept plan. So those are things that just are natural progressions in a process like this. It doesn't mean anything's happening. They just need to know where they are. They have to go in there with a surveyor and lay this stuff out. I know you were kind of smirking about that, but that's just the way it works in construction.
Thank you for enlightening me. Appreciate it. I'm not a surveyor or architect, so I appreciate that. That's why I asked the question. Liz, can you do me a favor and pull up your original timeline slide that you previewed? Are you in the position to do that or not? I don't want to put you on the hook here, but I couldn't chat with you on this session. Thank you. So a couple of things on this, guys, and I want to point out real facts. This is, this is a person's view of the background and the timelines. And it's obviously being protected above city interests. So I looked back at probably the last 10, 20, 15, probably 15 last city agenda, city council meetings. Never one of their images, especially in the first page of an agenda packet. This is the first one I found. This is a very protective aspect that, you know, we told you so. And I do want to make the point here that there's a little, right in the middle there, there's a kind of squiggly line, 2003 Kelsner Farm signs installed. That's not accurate. So I will be honest with you, and I looked back at my purchase agreement. We gave, when we built our house, by the way, these are all, these are 36 custom built homes back in 2003, anywhere from $450,000 to $550,000 without landscaping, right? So at the time, pretty expensive homes, or decent sized homes. I made my initial payment deposit to build in April of 2003, and there was no signs. We ended up closing and moving in September of 2003, and there was no signs. And I specifically remember in 2004, when the city did put the signs up, in fact, one of my neighbors, who the sign was on, that the city had put it on his property. And so we actually took the sign, I didn't know that, took the sign and moved it back where it linked against a tree because it was on his property by mistake. So it's important to note that, right? And it's important to note that for a couple of reasons. When, when, back in 2003, when we 36 homes built on Sofia Drive, there was no internet. There was no mobile phones. We didn't have access to city documents. And by the way, all this happened in December of 2002 with this big flipper room with the assessment. I never in a million years would have built on Sofia Drive. I wouldn't have known low density residential housing was going in there because we were told that it was four for forty, which is green belt. And I hope you've all reviewed my packet of information that was submitted to you. And I have screenshots and images from home documents back then. I'm not going to go over there right now. But it's just interesting, right? When you think about dating back to that time when there's no access to information other than going to knock on city, you know, city chamber doors, and nobody did that. We all built with the goal, right? That it was going to be load, you know, a green belt, forgive me. And that this is going to be a very happy place to raise kids, a walking school and all those other things. Liz, can, long as you have that deck up, can you go to the, I think it's the plot map with all the houses on it? Proposed houses? Thank you. So my recommendation here, guys, and again, I've filed a lot of information, a lot of thoughts with you guys, but you can't allow this traffic down Sofia Drive, right? If there's hypothetically a cost to build up by colds or something someday, whatever, those people are going to go down Sofia Drive at the end of the day. You need to dead end Sofia Drive. Maybe a happy alternative is put the park right at Sofia Drive, such that Sage Wood Three and Sofia Drive could both leverage the park. I don't know. Make it a green belt area and make it a, put some big plaque up in honor of Clarence Steve Kelsner for preserving finally the trees that are needed to be preserved in this allocation. There's different ways to construct this concept plan versus the ones in front of you now that will work. I don't know if you're going to get as many doors, but something else is going to work. And you can't wipe all those, for reasons that we've already discussed, you can't wipe all this traffic down Sofia Drive and make it zero sense. Huge safety issues, obviously. Final point here is that this is not, Sofia Drive is not Sage Wood. On the south entrance in the Sage Wood 1 and 2, there's a big monument saying, hey, welcome to Sage Wood. There's nothing on the east side of Sofia Drive welcoming Sage Wood, and we don't want that. Right? So D.R. Horton has created divided lines already. This is not a pass through for an upcoming neighborhood. It just needs to be dead end somehow, some way, or run about it, or cul-de-sac, or whatever. I don't know. It just doesn't make any sense. Final last point is that, thank you, I think it was Lynn that pointed it out. Liz, you'd made a comment about how great D.R. Horton did by preserving trees on the outlot. Excuse my French, but that's BS. I organized when Steve and Clarence Kelsner purchased a land behind us on the south side of the Sofia Drive and paid a heavy, heavy premium to conserve those trees. And by the way, the city, if you guys don't know it, you're the third party arbiter to make sure that those trees are always preserved. I can't touch that property. I can't build on it. I can't do anything to it. All I can do is maintain it and plant new growth. That's in the, that's in the arbiter's product. The city owns that responsibility to come up and check once in a while if you want to. That was part of the agreement with Kelsner. And then they go rip down all these woods, which is my mug. So not kudos to D.R. Horton by any stretch of the means. I guarantee you that if we had not purchased that property behind our homes, these houses would have buddied up directly against our homes. There's obviously that mentality in D.R. Horton relative to the clear cut pictures that you saw. Lastly, and we've been through a lot, but really please do consider, you know, this west corner of the green belt. There has to be some macro level thinking in terms of what's going to happen in that area before micro pockets of any homes, 86 homes get built. There's no plan, nothing may get touched in that broader green belt for years and years and years. But you've got to be thinking about that stuff, right? Because it's the macro environment to Chaska that matters. So with that, I'll regress and ask if there's any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Smalley? Can't see anyone, so I'm hearing quiet, so. Thank you. Appreciate that. And appreciate you working to get that buffer in there. That's sometimes how you take care of things. So thank you for that.
All right, Mayor, we do have another person with their hand raised, and it's DeB Ridgeway. And I will unmute them now.
Good evening. This is Deb Ridgeway with D.R. Horton. With me tonight is Mike Sewell and Fran Hagan with Westwood. Just wanted to introduce ourselves. We didn't get a chance to after the presentation, so.
You were next, so.
What's that?
Well, I said you were going to be next because I just wanted you to be able to hear the things and then come back with what's your thoughts were.
So, yeah, so we can wait to see if anyone else had comments. And then, again, we're here to answer questions. But we do appreciate the thoughts that, you know, council will give us and directing us to continue on with the plan. Thank you.
Kevin, are there other hands up? Again, you have to tell me that.
Yeah, no worries. There, Wade did have his hand up, so I will unmute him quickly in case he did have something else to speak about.
No, the account that I had was covered already. Thanks.
Okay. Currently, there are no other hands raised.
All right, we'll move. Deb, did you want to go into any more depth? I'm not sure.
No, we, we're just here to listen to your direction as we, like I said, further develop the plan. There are some good comments about maybe moving the crossing over the stream. There are, you know, some challenges that we'd have to work out, such as wetlands and additional trees being removed, but definitely something that we can explore.
Okay. Well, I mean, this is how this, I mean, you're pretty familiar with this, is how this goes. We all kind of take a look at it, give it our thoughts and pass our concerns on to you. And then we'll see what happens next.
Yes, thank you.
Council, anything else? Nothing?
Yeah, no, it took me a second on the noise. Sorry.
That's good.
You know, listening, I had an opportunity to meet with the neighbors on those Sofia Drive. A lot of the comments that they shared tonight were the same concerns that they had shared during our meeting. I guess my question, I have a couple of questions, a couple of comments. First one is the traffic study. At what point does that happen? And is it done manually, like physically, or is it done by mathematical calculation?
Yes. Fran Hagan here will answer that question for you.
Hi, I'm Fran Hagan with Westwood Professional Services. Actually now, in this era, there are data sources that we can get accurate counts without having to go to an actual, putting out the meters or having somebody watch the movements. Very much like the COVID thing is going on right now as far as the, they, they use cell phones. And it just costs a little bit more than the normal practice of putting counters out on the intersection. But we can get it, it's a standard in the industry and we can use that data from before COVID to get all the traffic information that we need. We just need to isolate the intersections that you need and we'll get that data.
Are you able to do the streets that Mr. Sorenson is asking in addition to Sofia Drive and Clover Preserve Drive? I think he had asked for Clover Preserve Lane and?
Schoolmaster.
Schoolmaster, yeah, thank you.
And Clover Field Drive.
And Clover Field Drive. My apologies.
Yeah, that's good.
Real quick one on that. I talked with Matt, and obviously Matt's on here now. I talked with Matt this afternoon, and I think he would concur that those should be included in the traffic study. He actually has a desire to be able to look at some of the impacts as it goes south too. So I think those would be ones that we would recommend to staff that are included in that traffic study.
You were talking Matt Clark, correct?
Matt Clark, yeah. Am I fair to say that, Matt?
Yeah, that's absolutely right, Taylor here, Councilman Hubbard. One of the things when Matt and I were talking about, as we were looking at this, is, you know, the difficult piece will, and the challenge with this particular development will be, how do the trips get distributed? But there's no question that, you know, the numbers and things that were used kind of from a cursory review, or not a cursory review, but the outcome of what was done with Sage Wood, the previous two developments need to be revisited and looked at more, probably in closer detail, rather than just manuals that identify what general numbers and assignments for housing districts and housing developments. So kind of looking at it more microscopically and saying, okay, you know, how does the neighborhood function? What is the true purpose of how these roadways, how are people using them today? And then drilling into, okay, what are the impacts of, you know, housing development? And kind of going into that level.
Okay, thanks. All right. I, I'm not.
I think Taylor had one more.
Oh.
Okay. My, I guess I had a sub-question based off of Mr. Sorenson's presentation. In regards to the schools, now I know a referendum did not pass. Obviously, if a referendum comes up in the future and does pass, the redistricting of schools would be in place. But let's just take that out of the equation. Adding the, you know, 83 new homes, is there calculations of growth? Like what's the capacity at currently at Clover Ridge? I'm sorry, my credit card machine badging. What's the, what's the, you know, capacity right now? Does it stay? Do they redistrict based on a development coming in like this?
Yeah, we talked, I think the answer is no, they probably would not do redistricting with just, 83 homes in the grand scheme of things is relatively small from an addition standpoint. We did talk with, again, with Principal Slindy about this. I think, you know, his, his general comments were that, you know, the districts in general understands that, that development is going to occur and so they're planning for it. I think his more pointed discussion was just not necessarily even around this development, but how we help like we have at other elementary schools around the community in dealing with those peak traffic periods, which again, I think is a legitimate issue regardless if, if this was a development that's going forward or not. We did the same thing up at Jonathan Elementary because they had, believe it or not, a worse situation than Clover Ridge Elementary did because of being on Pioneer Trail. So it would not be the first time that we've gone in and done something that. So that was, when we had the conversation with him, his bigger concern was more around, how do we help them in those peak times during drop off and pickup to come up with a better solution? So that's, that's currently what we're working on with him.
Okay.
Travis Olson has a follow-up question on the traffic study. Should he ask it now?
Yeah, I have, I have like general comments about it, but I'll, I'll, I'll set that outside for a second. Go ahead.
Okay. Where are you, Travis? So, so it sounds like they're going to be doing more of an actual traffic study using cellphone data. So how is that going to change the parameters that are being used right now for just the normal mathematical models? So obviously, if you're changing how it's being measured, the current measurements and the current expectations are based on mathematical models. So if we're using actual cellphone data, which obviously isn't always perfect, how is that going to be pulled into play? Obviously, it's the first time I'm hearing actually using cellphone data as the traffic study. So that doesn't necessarily match up with the historical of using just the math models.
So Travis, just so I understand, the question is your concern about, you know, you know, there's two ways to collect data. Stick strips down on the ground and, and, you know, actually do the count of cars. And I think there's been a concern brought up about, you know, this isn't the right time to do that type of study because traffic, you know, is much less. And so, and is your concern more about the cellphone data that they, that they collect during this time period? That would be concerning that it's not representative of what would normally be occurring?
It is partially that, but it's also partially the fact that, you know, the expectations are based more solely on the math models and not so much on actual traffic count because we know traffic count can vary through, you know, seasons and whatnot. So you're only taking a small subset of the, of the data points over a course of time. So.
So I think any traffic study, even if it's a mathematical study, is going to go back to look at actual traffic count data and then use that in their models to be able to extrapolate that out. I think, and Deb, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I hear what you're saying is that you guys would actually pay to get data that was non-COVID time to be able to understand the traffic patterns prior to the current period that we're in so you can get a better, more accurate count?
Yes.
Yeah. So any traffic study is going to look at some kind of actual traffic data and then be able to look at their formulas based on that actual traffic data. But I think it's an excellent point to say we shouldn't be using data from the current period. But that's, I think, why they're suggesting that they'd actually go and purchase data that was there prior to this period.
Yes, that is correct. And depending on when we do the traffic study, if it's later this fall, obviously we'll assess what the situation is with schools and such and react that way.
Okay, did I answer your question, Travis?
Yes, I think I did.
So that's a yes?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. All right, Councilmember Hubbard, you still had some more comments?
Well, yeah, I mean, if anybody has any more questions, I guess my comments on this...
Well, can I, can I just stop you for a minute? I think we're at the point now where I think we'll, we'll go ahead and, and stop any incoming and we'll let the council have their opportunity to talk now. Otherwise, we could keep getting, it seemed like we were in a quiet spot where we weren't getting any more questions or anyone else wanting to speak. So I think we'll end all outside conversations at this point. I mean, obviously you're still willing to stay with us. But this, now the council can take their time now to discuss what next steps are. All right, now back to you, sorry.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I have my concerns with the layout of this development. I think it brings a heavy amount of traffic down Sofia Drive. I think, I, I don't like the amount of trees that are set to be removed, that are the nice large oak trees. And I think that, you know, I granted it, it was a really long time ago that they had developed their properties and the signage was there, I get that. And, you know, Chaska's, I, being a part of this council, one of my goals was to be a part of smart growth and, and wanting to see that for Chaska. And so while I don't not want to see this development, I think that it can be retooled so that it can have a more beneficial quality of life for the people that live, not only on Sofia Drive, but also on the Sagewood Two Road of Clover Preserve Drive, right? There's so many different ones and they're so close. But I, I think it makes a difference for, for all those residents that it's something that really needs to be thought out. I'd like to see, you know, where is there going to be a park? You know, things, and I get that, that's all next step, I get that. But those are things that I'm thinking about right now and looking at. And I'm worried with the way that this is being proposed, that I, you know, I worry about the traffic levels throughout the whole neighborhood, not just down those two streets. So I, I'd like to see some nice changes to make it pass the second step. Where it currently stands, because I, I don't, I wouldn't feel right about, you know, passing it to go through the next round. But I'd like to see what D.R. Horton comes up with, you know, in regards to what their plan is. But, and also just the encroachment on the Green Belt concerns me as well. I think that, that matters, that we have that in place for a reason and we shouldn't just get rid of things, you know, because it seems beneficial at the time or in the future. So those things matter. You know, you can't grow, you can grow trees back, it takes a while to grow those oaks. You know, I just don't want to see us do things that, you know, is going to devastate that, that landscape and that area out there. So that's just my comments.
No, it's, I mean, that's what this process is about. That's, you know, like I said, the planning commission had their opportunity, this is our opportunity. And the same thing, we see, we're looking at things differently than the planning commission looks at them. So that's why it's important to have this process and go through this and get the feedback from the neighbors. That's, that's, that's what makes it a process and that's why we do it. But I have a question about the encroachment on the Green Belt. Where, what part of that are you referencing? Where, where is that?
Well, okay, so, I mean, this is all done pre, I mean, all of this was done pre-meet being on here, right? You know, that was all done back in two thousand and three. But, you know, we had that space allocated and then we kind of pushed it over and now it, you know, kind of sits over on the Rosie area there and like Matt had talked about with the Kelzer Farm to the north. And it's going to stay that entry point and that's great. I'm not against this, you know, no houses being built at all or anything like that. I think that, I know, it can be really scary to be in a, have a deadened street or land, or like a, you know, no outlet street and the benefits of that. And then to have that go from not being like that anymore, I can understand that and I, you know, I really empathize with all those neighbors because that is going to be a huge traffic pattern. And that's why I kind of raised the point to Mr. Sorenson that, you know, having an access point on Victoria Drive may not actually be a beneficial thing for that neighborhood because it could actually bring more traffic down their road that's undesired just at that point. But I also see the benefits of having additional houses in the development next to them that they can have more neighbors and it sounded like Halloween and it sounds like they do really awesome tree lighting display for Christmas. So they're a very tight-knit community there and that's awesome. And I think that it could grow, but it needs to grow smart and it, and I don't want it to see a bunch of houses just knocked on and crammed together, cutting all the trees away. What's the benefit of that, you know, for, for everybody kind of involved? And I know what it's like to move into a neighborhood that's undeveloped in certain areas and have that development change from what you think it's going to be. And you, you know, I, I just want to make sure that they know that they're being heard. I'm listening because I know what it's like to feel like, you know, I'm not being heard in this. And I'm, I'm here, like, like Mr. Sorenson said, I'm okay with going past the first round to see what D.R. Horton comes up with. But I, at this, if they come back with the same plans, I would not be in support of it. I just don't, I don't like the way it's being proposed as it currently is. So those are my comments and I'll, I'll open the floor up to anybody else on the council to make, you know, more suggestions, so...
All right, anyone else?
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk a little bit. So I feel this is where I live, hopefully twenty years from now, similar to this one. So I live in a new development, the stairs open field, a big wooded area, Big Woods Boulevard. And so trying to understand and relate to say, okay, if this happens to me twenty years from now, I live on roads that are dented right now, how does that impact? And trust me, on a daily basis, my neighbors remind me, hey, we hear about development over here, we want to know about it and I say, yes, okay. I also tell them that, hey, guess what? The comp plan shows houses there, so be prepared for that. There's a school and a landed complex, which there were signs of. You know, I, I've listened to everything that was said. I appreciate Councilmember Hubbard's comments about her feelings about it and I, and I value those greatly because she's taken, you know, it sounds like she's taken the time to talk to the residents and a lot of people have been involved. And I'm really trying to think, like staring at this plan with the roads and with the traffic and the trees. And the real, what it really comes down to is, I would echo some of her comments about, as currently laid out, it's, it's a struggle. Traffic's going to be a mess. We're going to, we're going, I, I don't, I'm not going to be surprised when we see those results. I think there's ways to fix that and I think they'll address that, I appreciate that. And I think, you know, the mayor said earlier, I also worry about just truly purely the number of houses. You know, I, I don't see how you can, even with new roads or new connector fields, limit the traffic, flow the traffic, preserve trees and with that current amount of houses. You know, and I don't know, I do think because of the uniqueness of the area, you know, D.R. has the opportunity to provide a pretty high-end product in that area, a pretty nice neighborhood. And so, you know, is that changing, you know, lot sizes and house sizes and models and everything like that? Now that complicates other things when you're trying to have a consistency between neighborhoods. You know, I'm thinking of, you know, similar nice entrances to a neighborhood, you know, that could be done with a tree lot. You know, so I, like I said, I, I kind of echo that too. I would be very disappointed that if this comes back as a preliminary plan and looks relatively the same. You know, I think, I think, I, I do, I just think the only really option is to save the trees and kind of preserve that as well as the traffic is to limit the number of houses and find a different way to kind of configure roads to kind of prevent some of that traffic. Now unfortunately, I, I do think the limitations of trying to go to other directions, north, south, or west are, is, are limited. We don't own the property, you know, they're not coming and asking us to buy it type of thing. But, you know, I, that's, that's my concern is I think growth is good, smart growth is better. And it's not always the best solution just to see how many equally-ish lots can we fit in a space to make it work? You know, especially in the fact that we, this is a really landlocked, roadlocked piece of parcel. You know, I know D.R.'s done good things in our, in our city and I, I, I'm confident that they're up for the challenge that this is partaking and I'm also confident they're listening to us, listening to the residents, listening to the [inaudible 0:11:53]. So that's kind of, that's kind of my comments, but I do think you got to be, you got to be smart with it. And, and from a, from someone who lives in a neighborhood with no mature trees, taking a tree down right now is hurtful. Like I have, I've replanted several trees because trees just don't like to grow and I plant them. You know, so you don't get those back. And, and so, you know, I, I steer at some big ones now and I hope never grow away, but, you know, driving down my streets, every tree is the same size as my neighborhood right now. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll go. So, you know, so I, I have to say that the biggest single thing that bothers me about this project is traffic. Traffic is, but, and it's not just the traffic that goes up Sofia, but a schoolmaster and then how it leads out to other roads. Because it's, you know, I mean, it's, the, the question isn't eighty houses. I mean, I'd add an eighty, I've got eighty-one houses in my neighborhood. They'll lead out through like a single exit. So I'm pretty well aware of what that traffic volume is. I don't expect it to be really any different for eighty houses going down a single street, but we have a few houses that are right on that entrance that see that many traffic, the transits go by every day. That said, the question is, is where's a kind of tipping point for something else down the road? I mean, no pun intended. But on Schoolmaster Drive, where it's basically a single street, right? You know, if people are going to work or going to school, it all tends to back up and there are a lot of other, other ramifications to that. So my, my feeling is that that needs to be looked at much more carefully, but in maybe not sort of a microscopic view, but in a macro view of like the bigger system because that whole system is very fragile because there's only a single exit that goes out to Angler Arena. And I think that to me is a concern both from a safety perspective and an access perspective. So that's, I mean, already to me it's a little bit tenuous. I understand the county is trying to funnel down to a single, a single access point, which is control, which is a good thing. But again, that limits the amount of flexibility that both residents and like first responders have. So one of the things I would strongly encourage is to, you know, to build, do more, to make sure we do a thorough traffic study of, you know, Schoolmaster as well as some of the other insular area roads that are impacted, as well as, you know, looking for out-of-box solutions to trying to figure out how to resolve this. In addition to that, you know, I feel like the site's awfully crowded the way that the healthless sites are laid out, they're platted. I mean, it's, it's similar to what's platted now in Sagewood Faces One and Two. But as we kind of look at like the, you know, what is going to that north side of property, it feels really crowded and there's a lot of stuff going on up there. So I certainly would urge the, urge the developers to look, the D.R. Horton, to look at that and look at ways to spread that out. And with that, one of the things that really bugs me, and this one bothers me because when I was on planning commission, we looked at Sagewood's Faces One and Two and one of the things that everyone talked about being a priority is tree preservation. One of the things that never came up a single time was that agreement with Kelzer to say that, you know, as a community, we would go out of our way to preserve those trees or that we would try to preserve those trees. Had that been in front of us on planning commission, I think we would have made a much stronger position to say we need to do more to protect the trees, maybe not, you know, prevent them from clearpetting so they are, as they did clear cut. While they did abide to the, you know, the letter of the agreement, you know, I feel that, you know, there was, there's probably more that could have been done. And likewise, seeing the new plant with, you know, like only forty percent of the trees left, I mean, that's, that's pretty disappointing, especially when now we know that there's agreement in place or there was a, you know, a statement made to say we do, and at least in good faith, try to preserve that amount of trees. So I feel a little burned by that personally because, you know, I was there when this went through and I feel like, you know, I have a little bit of a stake in that. So I feel like, you know, there's, we need to do this right and not, you know, and make sure we don't make that mistake again because you can't just regrow hundred-year-old oak trees. It just doesn't happen like that. The, and the last, the last couple of things are that first responder mercy access, you know, is one because it's pretty deep into the development. So I think that there is something that happens and you need to get access back there. I have no doubt they'll be able to get back there, but the deeper it is through these residential streets, the more time it takes and the more, you know, more risk there is for pedestrians and things like that coming through. But, and I know that we have, you know, top-notch first responders. We have like, you know, residents that are very conscientious and want to be good for the neighbors. But, you know, the further back it is in any residential area about direct access, the tougher it is. So, you know, it's just a matter of fact. And I think the, the other one was that more property to railroad tracks. I feel like we put those houses right up against old railroad lines, it just seemed like a really bad idea. So those are the big points that I have. But, and at this point, it does not feel big to me. It feels like there's a lot that needs to be kind of thrown together to really maximize like the number of plots that could be put on the property at this point. I don't feel like it really strongly supported at this point because of the way it's set up. So at this point, I still feel like I need to be sold on it. But that said, I also understand that at this point, we're moving, you know, the city's moving forward with this and we'll probably have enough votes to move. So given the phase and my suspicion that there are probably enough votes, I'll probably cast a nay vote as a, as a, as a signal to the, to the applicant that, you know, that we're not quite there yet to make sure that we do the right things, to make sure we resolve the issue that are there. That, the, the key thing here is that there's still an opportunity to do a lot of really good stuff here, but I want to make sure that everyone's on the same page. So when we come back, the residents that live in Sofia are okay with it. I don't expect that anything short of blocking that street is going to make them happy, but at least get them to a better place to say, hey, you know what? I can live with this or yeah, this, like, I understand you're trying to do the right thing here.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll just quick comment. I mean, I'm, I'm not going to pretend to know what living in Clover Ridge is like. I purposely bought a house downtown to, to have that historic feel. But just like, I, just like Councilmember Hubbard said, I'm all for smart growth. So Chaska's going to grow, that's the direction we have to grow, room to grow. But I agree that we have to, that seems like a lot of houses. I'm not a fan of putting that many houses in anywhere that close together. I know it happens and that's just a personal view of putting houses in. But I think houses, I don't disagree with houses going there. I think traffic is really important. I think relooking at how many houses are going there is important. So, you know, this is concept. I think seeing what comes back after all of these comments is going to be really important. But like I said, I think houses, it's going to end up with houses there. But what does that look like after all of this is going to be really important. I also want to just reiterate that, and I think it was mentioned by Councilmember Juan, the, or, I'm not sure, but the barrier between those railroad tracks. I've, I've driven through the Clover Ridge neighborhoods and there are a lot of kids, there are a ton of kids. And that'll be really important to make sure there's a really good barrier because that would just make me so nervous to have that much, that many families that close to railroad tracks. Obviously it happens, but that's going to be something I'll really be looking for in the next phase as well.
Okay, thank you. And just to close it out, I, I think, well, first off, thanks for everyone for joining us. I greatly appreciate comments and everything. The D.R. Horton group, thanks for being here as well, listening to the comments. So I, I think the message is pretty clear that we want to look at things differently. We want to look at probably a different road flow and definitely saving trees. There's some talk about not quite as big. And the traffic obviously is, are the, the major concerns of this. So we'll definitely see what next plans are, traffic studies and all that as, as we move forward. So, yeah, like I said, I don't know if there's much more to add. I think everything's really been touched on pretty, pretty clear. So, so, and I'm going to ask just one last time. Deb, any questions from us as council before we move forward to a vote? we move forward to a vote?
Hello, Mayor, this is Mike Sow and DR Horton. Just a point of clarification, maybe staff knows and I just missed it. If I'm listening to everybody, that it is a possibility out there if for traffic's sake, we could do a little bit reshaping the green belt and single family area, maybe loop the street like you say, or to bring the connection farther south. I just need some clarification on that and then we can get to work on, see what we can do with the next step in the process.
Well, are we encroaching on a green belt to the south?
Well, I, I think, you know, Kevin, you can correct me if you're wrong. I think everybody's been pretty clear about what, uh, you know, what they think is important to be able to address on this. You know, I guess my comment to DR Horton is from a staff perspective, I think we, we've heard pretty clear marching orders, uh, from people and I think we can help guide, uh, you know, you know, what, what's being said here and we'll be able to provide some, you know, as you come back with ideas, be able to provide some clear guidance of whether we think you're hitting the mark or not and, you know, provide some of those comments to be able to make sure that you're hearing exactly what, what's being said here. I, I don't know, to me, that feels like just one piece, uh, of, you know, what you just mentioned feels like one piece, uh, of what was being discussed. I think there's a broader discussion here and I, I think we can provide good feedback to it. I'd hesitate to just focus on that one single piece though, because I think there's a much broader, uh, discussion here, but we certainly as staff can provide that feedback because I, I, I think everybody, if, if concept plan phasing could work like this all the time, it'd be the best because this is exactly the point of having a concept plan is before developer goes out and spends a ton of money on creating plans, uh, that, uh, are really expensive, let's get what people, uh, perceive are the issues and let's use those to be able to design what we think is gonna be a good, uh, uh, development in here. So, I think everybody's been really clear and quite frankly, really consistent, uh, with what, what they've been saying and, um, I, I think we can provide good, uh, guidance to, to DR Horton to be able to respond to it. Kevin, any thoughts from your part?
I think you summarized it well on that.
Matt Clark, any, anything else?
No, I think you hit the nail on that.
Yeah, and so, I, like I said, I think it's really relooking about trying to get the Clover Preserve Road, uh, and then, uh, look at how, how can we preserve more trees and then just look at traffic flows. I think one of the, one of the things on traffic that we, we kinda seem to forget is, is if you, if you, you take a left, uh, neighborhood, you go right up to Pioneer Trail and you bypass all that. I mean, if I, if I was buying a house in there, that's where I'd be going. I mean, to me, you're away from all the houses, you got a forty-five mile, mile an hour speed limit versus thirty, you can get, you can get to two twelve faster, you can get to Target faster, you can get to most of those facilities faster, but, um, it's just, I, you know, we just follow whatever we feel is the best way to go, but I think that nowhere tonight did we talk about, about going left and I, it's, to the best of my knowledge, that goes right up to Pioneer.
Well, and Hunter Mark too. I mean, I, I'd say, having lived in the neighborhood in two different spots now, I probably take equal number of trips on Hunter Mark as I do on, on Clover Ridge Drive and going down to.
I think it just depends on where you're going that day.
It depends if I'm going to the Commons or if I'm going to two twelve. I mean, I think that's what most people in that neighborhood experiences. It sorta depends on where you're going.
Yeah, end time of day, obviously. I, I certainly wouldn't go past the school at eight in the morning just knowing that, what's going on, but, but again, I, I realize that there are people that do that and maybe they don't have an alternative in some areas, I, I get that, but, uh, clearly, clearly, uh, the next phase, we'll see what, how things play out, if it passes, that is, after, after vote and, and, uh, so, all right, with that, uh, one final, anything final from council? DR Horton, you got a clear message between, I think, between this and staff working with you, I think the message to me seems really clear, um, so.
Yes, we agree. Thank you.
Okay, all right, good, thanks. All right, council, last comment, otherwise, uh, what are your thoughts on, uh, again, we're gonna go back to adopting Resolution twenty, twenty dash twenty, approving concept plan for Sagewood Third.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty, approving the concept plan for Sagewood's third edition, DR Horton, EC, uh, twenty twenty dash zero six.
Second.
Is that Councilmember Hatfield's second?
Yep.
Okay, so I have a council, all right, excuse me, I have a motion by Councilmember Gra, second by Councilmember Hatfield, again, uh, adopting Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty, approving concept plan for Sagewood Third. All right, discussion.
I will say that I, I put the motion out there and I do plan, I do wanna just clarify and make sure it's all clear. Um, I will vote, I am gonna vote yes, but I do strongly encourage DR and I trust that they will, that, uh, that they need to make improvements to this plan. Uh, at a concept level, I'm comfortable with the feedback that I heard from the council tonight and the mayor, as well as the feedback from both DR as well as the, the audience here. Uh, you know, it's, it's just, I, 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 it's worth, they, they've earned the trust of, in the city to at least go back and to, to hear the feedback and make a presentation at the preliminary level and I look forward to, uh, hopefully seeing a, a, a good plan for all at, at that time.
And I'd like to add one thing too, is like, you know, I'm planning on voting no on this, but I really, really want DR Horton and the residents to figure out how to make this work, because if you guys can come back to the table together, I'd be happy and I'd love to say yes to this.
Well, and, and I just, well, I, I wanna kinda go off John's words, that, uh, DR Horton has done some, uh, good projects in our city and I, I do think that, you know, the fact that they have, they are sitting at the table and listening and, and have it, I, I'm confident that something's gonna come back, that's gonna be, um, clearly different than what we're looking at today, so, um, I just, uh, uh, I, I just, like I say, I, I feel confident that something's gonna come back and, and that they have done good projects and I, I just want them to know that and, and realize that, that, you know, their work is appreciated in our city as well. Also, uh, you know, if this gets voted down, I believe then that it would be out the door, correct?
Yeah, I mean, everybody always has an opportunity to bring back another concept, uh, plan, but this particular one would, would not move forward anymore.
Okay, so I, I just wanna be clear on that, Mike, when you said you wanted to work out, but, you know, sometimes when you vote no, it changes how things are done, but you vote what you feel is right and that's all, but I just wanted to be clear on that, where, where we're at on that, so. But I, at this point, I'm gonna support it. I, I feel that it's concept plan and like I said, it, we're gonna see something different and we'll, we'll go, we'll go on that next step, we'll see what happens. So, all right, anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second. All right, roll call. Uh, Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
Councilmember Wong.
Nay.
Mayor Winchell, aye. All right, so it passes four to one. All right, so, uh, we'll, we'll move on to the next step whenever that, I'm sure it'll be a little while now before we.
There, yeah, there's quite a bit of work they have to do, so I, I'm assuming it's gonna be a, a little while, but, uh, um, I, you know, again, I reiterate that I think the, the comments that everybody provided during, uh, this phase were fantastic. I think that provides everybody, including the developer, with a clear sense of what it's gonna take to be successful, uh, on this development and certainly as staff, uh, will be providing that guidance, so, uh, so there isn't confusion as we move forward. So, um, that's, appreciate the comments, it helps us as we move through the process.
All right, thanks everyone for joining us. Uh, you're obviously welcome to stay, but if you wanna go, I totally, uh, understand that. I see people disappearing already, so. All right, we as a council now will move forward, uh, to item nine, which is bills. Uh, questions on any bills?
Yes, from Wong, let's see. So, questions, um, man, let me change my glasses here.
Put on the super cool ones now or what?
Yeah, this is more like because I'm getting super old, well, not that old, but I'm getting old. All right, so on page, page one, when, when we had, there's like something about the, about the golfing thing, about the golfing restocking. So, it kinda brought up a general question of the, of what are the change, what are changes and plans that we're taking given what the inventory for like procurement of, um, like retail stuff for like the curling center of golf and things like that, given what we're seeing out there today, knowing that we kinda gotta stop it for the season?
Yeah, it sorta depends on the facility and actually the type of product. Uh, so like the golf course, they do a lot of their ordering, uh, basically before the season starts. Some of that stuff he's actually put, uh, canceled orders on. Uh, things like hats have actually been pretty popular because we've been able to sell those outside with our station. Um, so there's certain things that work better than others when you don't have a clubhouse. Um, but, uh, you know, certainly as we go through, like for instance, one thing that, uh, you know, uh, you likely won't see this summer is unless things change dramatically is the, uh, concession stand, uh, down at Fireman's Park, uh, and so, uh, that's, that's one, obviously, we wouldn't be ordering supplies for that. So, it really sorta depends on the function, uh, and where we're at, uh, but there are definitely things that we're doing differently as far as ordering.
Now, didn't, isn't John letting people in by appointment in Dubai now? Didn't I read that?
Uh, he's getting into that. It's very, he's very slowly getting into that, but today was the first day he could do that.
Okay, I, I thought I read we were doing it, so, okay.
Good to, good to hear that. Okay, page two, um, Assured Business Partner, sorry, Assured Partners Capital, there's something for an agency fee for policy, something, and what was that for?
Yeah, they're the parent company of Casualty Assurance and so they're the ones that actually are agent for our city property and liability insurance coverage, so you have to have an agent, uh, to be able to go through the league's coverage and they act as that agent.
Okay, got it. Let's see, um, page four, coordinated business systems and office stuff, is it contract invoice? But it didn't say for like what, what department or anything like that, I kinda wonder what it was.
Yeah, that's, that's for specific, we have, uh, different contracts and different copiers throughout the city depending on when they are actually, uh, received. Uh, that particular one is for the police department.
Okay, got it. And then page four also on there is one for the diversified plumbing and heating, there's one for the RPZ testing and rebuild, but this is kinda got cut off obviously.
Yeah, that's, that's at the community center. Um, that is actually for, uh, let's see, it was for the, there was actually some rebuilding of valves that they needed to do and I believe it had to do with the valves that were actually providing water to the, uh, caterpillar in the pool, uh, cause we did rebuild, uh, that during this time because it was starting to deteriorate quite a bit, so it was, uh, rebuilding the valves inside of that.
Okay, got it. Okay, and then on page five, what's the current, so, on page five, there's one for energy management solutions. I know we pay them a, a monthly retainer. What's kind of our, 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 our,
Uh, after the event, uh, after everything closed down, we did talk with them about it. I gotta be honest, I was a little disappointed too that they, uh, didn't go forward with it. Our lease, uh, our lease anticipated a, what we call a casualty loss, which casualty loss is determined of like a fire, uh, or something like that that would shut down the building that would provide us with a base lease, uh, because they, they cover business loss insurance. The problem is, is that the insurance industry has determined that, uh, COVID-19 is not a casualty loss. And because of that, they're not covering that. And so, uh, their lease is not favorable to them, uh, uh, not favorable to them running it in these conditions because there's, it, there's no, there was no anticipation of something like this happening.
So is that all their restaurants or just this one?
Just this one. Why, I, I, actually, I think they decided to just shut down all their restaurants. But the, it's a particular issue in this one because it is a, it's a percentage-based lease. And without this being defined as a casualty loss, they were determined that they were losing money by actually operating while, I think a lot of other places, it might not be on a, uh, that term of a lease, uh, where they're actually paying a certain amount regardless of how well they do. They almost have to keep their doors open because they need something to be able to cover that route.
Yeah, it's just interesting. So they must've had it ready to go for three days on their webpage and then kind of nailed it down. Cause I've got, I've, I actually just verified that I wasn't crazy. So I was gonna order some food right now because I was hungry, but. Still close.
You can still go to Little Caesar's.
Yeah.
Pizza pizza.
Um, I guess lastly, I would say, uh, or actually I have two last comments. One, I just appreciate tonight's meeting. Um, I think as a council, I'd just like to share that we all, I, I felt like it was a good meeting. We shared concepts. Uh, I think we knew based on prior history that, um, we were, there was gonna be some feedback. I was also very appreciative of the turnout for, for having a Zoom meeting. And I think I looked at one point, there were like thirty-three people. Uh, obviously that includes us and that counts. I was appreciative of that. Uh, you know, again, uh, there's no right or wrong way of doing it, but we had to do it at this time. Uh, obviously being in person might've drawn more. It might not have drawn more people, truthfully. Uh, and then lastly, I just kinda wanna, you know, kinda talk to Chaska a little bit about continuing to stay safe in Minnesota. Uh, I think, you know, we all have a, a role to play as this, uh, state home executive orders lifted and continue to start going out and, um, things are opening to continue to support our small Chaska businesses in our, in our town, as well as being smart about it. So I would just, you know, kinda, you know, a lot of voices are telling you to do a lot of different things. And I think we just kinda make sure we're, we're trying to do what's best for the community and, and really just stay safe in Minnesota. So I thought I would just share that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Yep. Um, so a few things. Um, so I attended the, uh, EOC COVID briefing Monday. That was really informative. Thank you for inviting the, uh, business, uh, business community out there. I think it's really helpful for them to, you know, to have that conversation with EOC. Um, and also attend, and there's also a Chaska Business Roundtable this Thursday. Um, and from two to three, that's on Zoom. So if anyone's interested or owns a business, it could be, you know, um, it could be an individual sole proprietor or, you know, larger business. Um, certainly encourage, um, anyone who's interested to attend. I think they're gonna be discussing things about, um, about best practices and strategies for reopening, as well as things like getting supplies. Um, I think it's, uh, it could be really, really, uh, helpful and informative to, um, in small businesses, part of dating businesses around the community. Um, yeah, another is the school district that we kind of mentioned earlier. School district sounds like the, uh, so selected the superintendent. So that's, uh, so it's good news. So the search has ended and, uh, hopefully we're moving forward to, uh, the new direction or moving forward, moving forward again. Um, Southwest Transit, um, Southwest Transit going through some interesting times. Uh, one of the things that's also notable about today is since, um, as, um, Councilmember Grau mentioned, is that we were now officially reopened. Um, that means in theory, we should have more ridership. Uh, I just confirmed with, um, the CEO of Southwest Transit, let's image that we had about a hundred riders today. Um, so it's kind of about the same as it was last week, but we'll see if the, the numbers start picking up again. Um, unfortunately, a hundred riders is like really, really poor. I mean, that barely feels like a bus and a half to be pulled. So to run buses all through downtown, we're basically just like taking out like, you know, money because we're basically running buses pretty empty most of the day. Um, one of the things that will be coming is that Met Council and, or Metro Transit, uh, Metro Transit is already asking riders to wear face masks. So because of this, um, the Met Council's asked, um, asked the, uh, suburban transit providers to also make that request of riders too. So just expect that if you're riding Southwest Transit or any, um, regional transit here in Minnesota, that, or any original transit to Twin Cities, you expect that you'll be asked to, um, wear a mask. Uh, that's for, you know, to help, uh, prevent the spread of COVID. Um, um, the, let's see. And then one of the other things you're finding is that some of the CARES Act funding that we're supposed to be getting from the federal government, that was rushed through, uh, like, uh, last, a few weeks ago that we were talking about, that CARES money was supposed to be arriving like a week or two after that legislation was passed to sign by the president. But it turns out we're hearing from our, we're hearing through our legislators and, um, also the state sources too, that, that funding is basically being tied up and probably won't be seen in any of that until like July. So that means that we'll have to figure out how to bridge any gaps financially from, uh, um, you know, from whatever comes up between now and then. So, um, that's not great news, but it's, you know, something we have to deal with as a transit, transit agency. And then as an agency, they're doing a lot around messaging to, you know, around, um, messaging around things like these social distancing, wearing masks and, uh, protect, being safe. Uh, so we're gonna be, you know, actively pushing that, um, out to all of our ridership. Um, in addition to like, you know, putting floor markings in buses and in stations, things like that. And also, uh, say of additional parking at Southwest Station, for example, to make sure that even like those people park, that they're safe as well. Um, and they're actually gonna be adding a few more spares, knowing that hopefully, well, with the expectation that hopefully as restrictions loosen up, that hopefully we'll be getting more ridership. Uh, I think we're crossing our fingers that, you know, we'll get more people actively going to work and, you know, taking, using, using, using transit. Um, and, um, of course, continue with the, the social distancing. Um, I, on a personal note, I attended a couple of, um, of these, uh, of these, uh, drive-by birthday parties or celebrations over the past week. It was, uh, pretty interesting. It's a very different experience. So, you know, but it's good that people are still getting out there, trying to keep those social connections. And certainly encourage people to, you know, reach out to their friends and try to stay connected because socially distant doesn't really have to all be a part. Um, couple of questions or a couple, yeah, a couple of questions here from the bi-weekly report. Um, under the budget changes to address revenue reductions, um, is, what is the franchise fee collection that's usually less due to, um, less utility use? As more people are at home, you, would it, does it make sense that it should be higher? Because it seems a little counterintuitive.
The businesses, the businesses, I mean, our, our residential is a smaller portion of our electric usage in the community than our businesses are. And so as some businesses are down, uh, we're seeing a lesser usage. Some businesses are actually up because their business is actually, actually gotten better, uh, through this, uh, time. So we haven't seen a huge decrease, but we have seen a decrease, uh, because of it shifting more residential and less business.
So it's, so it basically becomes like some of the businesses maybe like experiencing like growth for whatever reason, that, you know, they're assuming more, more electricity. And then of course, that's offsetting the greater residential and.
Like food manufacturers.
Yeah.
I mean, we have, we have, what, four major food manufacturers in the community? Uh, I think they're starting to see that their business is actually pumping up quite a bit.
Okay. Well, it's good, it's good to hear for our businesses though, that they're doing okay. At least it's, it's to hear it in four of them are doing okay. The more, the better, right?
And it sort of depends on what industry they're in and if they serve the retail or the, or the, uh, wholesale market. The ones that are serving the retail market really are, are doing well.
Yeah. Hmm, interesting. Um, and last question I have is that for the community center, maybe this was answered at some point, but I just wanted to double check. Um, so if someone has a membership to the community center and because of this, they can't use that, their memberships are basically just getting pushed out because I assume that we're, you know, compensating for that.
Yeah, the, the thought was is, you know, we've been telling people, you know, instead of canceling, keep your membership and then we'll, whatever time period we're closed, then we'll add that on to your membership. Um, you know, cause we wanted to create incentive to keep people instead of trying to regain them once, you know, once they, it's harder to regain them than to just say right up front, we're gonna give you the benefit of that additional, uh, time, whatever time we're closed.
Good. Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Hubbard?
Okay, um, a couple of quick things. Um, uh, I, Mike, you didn't mention the traffic study, correct? The Arboretum?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so. Yeah, so there, there is the, uh, um, Minnesota, um, Arboretum Traffic Study. And right now, if you go on, if you, if you type that in Google, Arboretum Traffic Study, or if you go on the Carver County website, um, you can find the link. Right now, they're looking for feedback on, um, Eighty Second Street on some of the proposals. So, uh, and if you travel that road, if you live on that road, it's really important to go on there and give feedback because there's about three key areas, um, that they're really looking for, uh, in regards to that.
This is their, this is their virtual open house too?
Yeah, and the virtual open house. I apologize. Yep, there's also that component. I, I guess I was looking at Eighty Second Street mainly specifically. Um.
When is the virtual open house?
It's ongoing, uh, right now until May.
Like, like the, two, three months, basically.
Yeah, it's like May twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth. It's, I think probably right before Labor Day, I think is when it ends. So.
I think it's kind of been pushing out, but maybe it's something worth like pushing out internally from the city too, because it affects a lot of city residents.
Yeah. I mean, I think they're, from the way the website looks, they really would love to do an in-person open house later on, but I think right now, this is the way that they're going forward with it. So, um, but it's, you can see all the slides. I mean, I think it's just as good, you know, yeah, interaction piece isn't there, but at least you can see what they're looking to do and you can really, you know, read over the information and, and still give your feedback and able to comment on things. So. Um, I would also, I mean, it's not official, but, um, I was, I was able to catch some of the, um, community interviews with the superintendent candidates. So, um, really great, uh, system they had there for the school district and, um, was really impressed. Would like to maybe preemptively welcome Ms. Sales Adams to the District 112. So that was exciting news. And, um, I look forward to seeing, um, and hearing more from her and seeing more things. So I think that was really great. And then, um, the third point, kind of, uh, Councilmember Grau kind of touched on. This is a little bit of a PSA, just, you know, today was the first kind of official day that some of the businesses could be open again, um, kind of beyond curbside and things like that. I think, um, small businesses have worked really hard to put their COVID plans in place and, um, trying to acquire, you know, the proper protective wear and proper sanitization, um, materials. I think, um, you know, a lot of these businesses, they're not just concerned about, um, their safety. They're concerned about their, their customer's safety, their employee's safety. So I think a lot of them have the signage up that, you know, ask you to kindly wear masks and, you know, abide by social distancing and things of those sort. I think, um, we as residents and patrons of those businesses, um, you know, should do what we can in our part to help keep them safe, keep ourselves safe. So, um, and we can, you know, it's a stressful time for everybody and, you know, tensions are really high and emotions are really high. Um, and I know that these businesses appreciate, um, all the, um, patronage that, you know, you will do now and in the future. But I think, you know, uh, just having that kindness factor in there kind of goes a long way to, um, making their day because they've been eagerly waiting for this, but they want to make sure that they keep you safe and that they do it right. So that's kind of my PSA about that. And that's it for me.
You know, I think that ties in really well to one of the things that the Chaska CARES team has started to work on is a campaign, uh, about really encouraging people to do those things as they visit small businesses in the community. You know, tying into this Chaska CARES that maybe even a signed campaign in people's yards to say, uh, you know, chat, or I care, uh, I wear my mask because I care, or I wear, you know, I wash my hands because I care. I don't go to work if I'm sick because I care. You know, those sort of basic things that, uh, trying to encourage people, especially as we get into this open period, is, you know, it's, it's almost sort of become a sign of respect for the, for the, you know, just like handshaking, uh, was, you know, to, you know, recognize that, that people are concerned about this and they should, and that wearing a mask is almost, becoming almost sort of like a sign of respect to people as you visit their businesses and stuff. So you'll see some camp, more campaign stuff coming out in the Chaska CARES to really encourage our residents to think about that as they go to businesses.
Yeah, I liken it to like taking off your shoes when you enter somebody else's home. So, you know, if, if you're able to do that as a sign of respect and they, and they ask you to wear a mask or if you have one to, to do that, I know they're uncomfortable, um, and nobody's used to them yet. Um, but it, it goes a long way to making them feel like they're doing the right things in their business to keep everybody safe. So.
All right, you good? All right. Uh, Councilmember Hatfield?
Yeah, um, I'll just, a couple of these things have been mentioned, but the, I'm just gonna re-mention them. Um, Chaska Business Roundtable, that was the first one. That was really helpful. And I think I'm really looking forward to hearing, um, from, from the, uh, Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development about just some reopening, um, stuff and just some of those guidelines. I own a small business that doesn't, isn't like a brick and mortar, but still obviously will have, um, lots of expectations of, of me in the event industry. So I'll be looking forward to that. That's again on Thursday from two to three. Um, you can go to Facebook to register for it. So make sure to register there. Um, and then I also had the opportunity just to, along with anyone, sit in the, um, some of the community forums and, uh, interviews for the superintendent. I don't have a child. I don't plan to have children, but still really interesting, um, to, you know, hear the community's feedback and, and to hear the three candidates who all seem to be great candidates. Um, and to talk about this being a destination, uh, destination district and, and that, and that sort of thing. So I just thought it was really, the questions that were asked were so thoughtful, the attracting such great candidates. Um, and certainly Ms. Sales Adams was a fantastic candidate and excited, you know, to see, to see that and where that goes. So, um, really interesting and just, I'm always just so impressed with the community and, um, their thoughtful questions during the forums are really, really impressive. So, um, uh, I've seen a few things on social media that I wanted to just touch on. Um, the mountain bike trails going in, uh, on Pioneer Trail, a long Pioneer Trail, a lot about that. So the, um, Carver Trails, Carver Trails, am I just, am I right? Is that what they're named?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Oh, I'm putting those in. And, uh, there is a YouTube video about them on the City of Chaska's YouTube. So definitely check that out. A few questions about, um, kind of that organization, what they're doing there. Highly visible as you go that way. So, um, it kind of exciting to finally see those going in. I think we talked about them, feels like forever ago, um, now. So exciting to see those going in. Um, and then, uh, Memorial Day, so I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about that, um, next Monday. Um, you know, Memorial, a lot of people wonder the difference between like Memorial Day and Veterans Day. Memorial Day is really special. It's the day to remember, um, our veterans who died in active duty. So that's a really important day. Um, and, you know, I'm thinking of those families that lost someone. And just take a moment on Monday, you know, whether you get out, you're gonna go to Veterans Park, social distance style, or, um, just to, just to somehow look back on, on what that day really means for our country. Um, I think even more now, we're, we're fighting a different battle than our country has in, in the past, but, um, is, is just as important. So, um, and I believe our, we were, we recorded that, um, Memorial Day service and I was there for that. Um, and I believe it'll be, I'm not sure when it's gonna hit.
Ten o'clock.
Um, to social media.
Ten o'clock on Monday.
Ten o'clock on Monday. So, um, watch out for that. That's a, that's another good way to remember that, um, that day. And, uh, I'll also just shout out to our veterans organizations in the community. Uh, a lot of, a lot of them would normally be fundraising this month, um, with poppies. And we don't get to do that this year, not the same way at least. So keep your veteran community organizations in, in back of your mind if you're making donations and things. I know as being a part of the auxiliary, that that's, this is our, one of our largest fundraisers to help veterans in the community. So, um, be thoughtful of those organizations as well across the board, um, with Memorial Day on Monday. So, um, that's all I had.
All right. Mr. Clark, anything? Uh, Nate?
Um, I just want to note for the Business Roundtable on Thursday, we did post that. Um, so the last time we had some limitations on being able to post in time and you need to limit council participation. But this time, since it is posted, you can, all of you can join if you desire. That's all I've got.
All right. Um, Nate, I won't be joining you. I have to go see my surgeon same time on Thursday for my goofy knee again. So. So I will not be joining you. So, sorry. I was gonna make this one too.
I hope the appointment goes well.
Me too. All right, Nate, or, uh, Matt, anything?
Me.
I was saying, thanks, Nate. Matt, you got anything?
Um, the only thing, uh, I just wanted to mention is we are working with a high school. I think at the final details are getting put together tomorrow for June fifth for the graduation, uh, event that we'll have in the community. So more details will come out. We put out sort of an initial teaser about it last Friday, or Kevin Wright did. Got some good feedback on that. And, uh, I think people are excited to, to see the community jumping in, doing something. So big thanks to Chaska CARES team.
All right, that's it?
Yeah.
You guys digging my hairstyle? I got an email from That Seventy Show. It told me one more month and I'm gonna make it on there. So, I don't know. We'll see if I gotta cower to a haircut or if I'm gonna keep going. I haven't figured that out yet. Uh, just a few things. Uh, I, I do wanna make sure some of these things were touched on, but I, I feel it's important as well. Uh, I want us to continue to support our local businesses. I think that we've done a good job of support, uh, offering support to them and, and getting to them, but we can't stop now because we think things opened up. And I had, I had one, uh, place reach out to me and say, make sure you mention that lunches are available. Most every one of the restaurants that are available are open for lunch. We do have that full restaurant tour and a map, uh, on our website. So please feel free to utilize that. We're gonna try. We don't know how easy it'll be or hard, but as businesses open up, try to add some of them to that website. Uh, we don't, we don't, not sure how that will exactly go. So, um, and I do wanna say this morning at our EOC, we met with our, uh, business community. While the turnout wasn't great, I think it was good information shared again. Um, so we, we've been, we've been, uh, doing that. We, uh, we met with our, uh, senior living groups at the first, uh, I don't know when it was, now probably two weeks ago. And then we met with our food manufacturers after that, and this was our business folks. Um, so I, I think it's, it's good ways to reach out and hopefully this will expand that roundtable this Thursday. Um, uh, as we keep continuing to move forward. And we talked a lot about today in our EOC about, we're pretty certain the governor's gonna come out with the restrictions and what's gonna happen with the restaurant business. It's pretty hard to say business can open up June first, but you can't have more than ten people. But then there are people saying that they can get half of their occupancy. Well, they don't jive. And so he's been pretty strategic about how he messages. So, uh, according to Councilmember Wong, he's gonna announce Wednesday, uh, what his plans are for, um, uh, I, I think additional businesses as we move forward into June first. So makes it challenging for some of our local businesses, but they still have two weeks that I hope that they're working on, on getting that plan ready to go. I think we've surpassed the two-hundred-and-fiftieth, uh, Birthday Patrol by our police and fire department. So that's, uh, pretty awesome and they still seem to be a huge hit. So, um, I don't know. The hardest thing is, is gonna, if the, if this COVID goes away, I don't know how we're gonna stop the Birthday Patrol. That's gonna be the challenge. Uh, but we'll, we'll move forward on that. Um, again.
I'll take that problem.
What's that?
I said, I'll take that problem.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Um, uh, I do wanna say congratulations to our new superintendent, Lisa Sales Adams. And is it Adam or Adams? I think it's Adams.
I think it's Adams.
Um, welcome, welcoming her to our community. Uh, I look forward to her coming here. She said she really, I, I listened to, I was only able to get to hers, but she said about how she wants to get out in the community and see us. So, uh, I'm putting that out to her. I'm, I'm sure she's home listening to this right now. So I'm putting that out to her that she can come see us and we'd be more than happy to sit down and, and have a conversation with us. Also, I, I, I do wanna say thanks to Clint Christopher, our former superintendent. I think he's here till July first.
Yep.
I, I don't know how, sometimes, you know, when we get somebody new in place, I don't know how long before they just gotta slowly just appear. So I, I do wanna say thanks to Clint before he does get away. Um, so thanks for his time here. Um, Matt talked about the city, uh, plans. I don't know how much people are really aware. So what we're trying to do is, uh, the night of graduation, they say their ceremony is gonna be about an hour. Then right after that, uh, our goal is, is to try to have police and fire units scattered across. Can I share all this? Yeah. Uh, um, have police and fire units.
Well, that's gonna, it's gonna definitely determine what the plan is.
Yeah, well, provided it doesn't change on me. We've had, we've had many plans on this, believe me, that we've, we've, uh, worked on. But, uh, we're gonna have police and fire scattered through the community. We have a list of where all the seniors reside at this point. And we're also gonna, I think our plan is to utilize the civil offense sirens and for twenty seconds. And we call it, what do you call it?
Twenty seconds to unite.
Twenty seconds to unite for the class of 2020. And our goal is, is that, you know, all the seniors will be at home because it's all done virtual and that all of their neighbors, everybody comes out, whether they honk their horns, pounding pans together, whatever you do, I'll just give them a cheer to try to get the whole community, uh, at that time to, uh, come together and do that. So, um, and then right after that, um, we're gonna go on a, uh, someone is, I'm not sure who's, who is the parade at this point. But we know we're gonna have a school bus with maybe some of the valedictorians and, and folks like that, along with the hawk in the bus. And then they're gonna make strategic path through the city and hopefully get most of the seniors. I don't think we're gonna get them all, but you're gonna see a route so they can hopefully join us somewhere along the route, route somewhere. And the other thing, uh, we have a banner coming to hang over Main Street. Hopefully it'll be up this week yet. And then we have two banners that we're posting. One will hang on, on the pioneer side, on the fence by the school. And the other one will hang on the fence, uh, pointing out to two twelve, uh, congratulating seniors. So, um, just, just to know, that's, that's kind of the plans that the City of Chaska is doing at this point. So. We're excited. We're glad we can do something for them, uh, you know, and, and as a city point, this is about as much as we could possibly do. We, we tried for a large parade with everybody, but that is very challenging. Um, I'm a little worried about what's gonna happen as we start this. Are people gonna start joining in with the parade as it goes by? But, um, we'll figure it out and we'll make it work. And, uh, it should be a, a good night for everyone. And that's June fifth. And I'm not sure what, you know what time they start ceremonies?
Uh, we've heard it's gonna be for like four to five-thirty, but they're still sort of determining that.
I find it hard to believe they're getting through in an hour, but, uh, but anyways, immediately after is when all that's gonna, gonna take place. So, um, I too wanna say, uh, I hope people take time for Memorial Day. Now we're not, uh, all the parades are off. The cemetery visits are off. All those things are postponed, obviously, at this point. But there was, um, uh, the program that would have been was, uh, filmed at, um, the Veterans Park and with interviews with some of the vets and, um, so it, and then Kevin and Mike are putting that together. They, they filmed it for us. So it will be, um, I'm kind of looking forward to it, to see it all. And that's gonna be at ten o'clock on Monday. So I hope you take. And that's going to be at 10 o'clock on Monday, so I hope you take that opportunity. Instead of spending time down in the park, you take the time. The adventure, it's probably going to be about an hour long. And take that time to honor, honor all of our vets that have given their life for, for our country. Lastly, I, I just want to give a quick shout out to a guy that's been really kind of quietly in the background, but has really made a big difference. Chad Palm, our ITIS Director. He has done a tremendous job about getting people to have the equipment that we needed to get them at home. And we got it done. I was surprised how fast we had people at home. He's now working on, we're looking at our future needs. So he's working on plans that we're going to try to get some of these things in place ahead of time just in case and just how business might change in the future, how we do business. Things are going to be different, so. But he's been kind of one of those guys and, and he's worked great with Kevin Wright about putting these Zoom meetings together and getting all the technical stuff down. Now Kevin has really turned into the Zoom master for us, so Kevin as well is.
That's what we call him too.
Yeah. But if we wouldn't have, you know, Kevin to be able to be our moderator tonight, how would we have operated? It would have been very challenging. But thank you to him. But Chad has just kind of been that guy that if you didn't know it, he, he just kind of, we were here when we were setting up our first Zoom meeting. We were having all this problem. The next thing you know, Chad shows up, so it.
Every time we've ran into a technical problem in the last two months, it's no kidding. Like a minute later, you look over and there's Chad walking into the room.
He'll come into the ELC.
It's like he has some sense that he knows when a problem is occurring.
So I, I just, I don't think that he's gotten the shout out necessary. I wanted to make sure that I did that tonight for him, so. Thank you, Chad, for everything you did and keep up the great work, so. All right, I think that's all I have. I don't know. Anybody else think anything? It's late.
Can I just add on, just like, just your shout out to Chad? Because I think, you know, IT guys, being an IT guy myself, IT guys go so underappreciated because when was the last time you thanked your IT guy because your email worked, right? You know, I mean, it's never happened. You just assume that somebody's there. So to Chad and all the IT crew out there and doing a fantastic job. Thanks.
I'm just happy that our Zoom works. Just think, like I said, just think if we had had that technical difficulty here, what, what, with what we had going on tonight, it would have been a nightmare, so. It's, it's greatly appreciated that we can get through this. And all we did was lose Kevin for a while, so.
Yeah.
And, but that, that, you know, really for the two or three meetings we've had, we've really had very minor little glitches, so. So we're very fortunate, so. All right, last call. Otherwise I'd entertain a motion to go home. I mean, adjourn.
I'm going to speak the motion to, oh, go ahead, Mike.
Seconded.
All right, Mike and Taylor. So I have a motion by Councilmember Wong, second by Councilmember Hubbard to adjourn. All right. Councilmember Hatfield.
You know, it is 11 o'clock.
I know, right?
I was noticing that.
I'm part of the bedtime tonight, so.
Tell your child to say, tell your child to say aye.
Can you say aye?
No, aye. So you're saying aye to adjournment?
Oh, no.
You're saying aye, correct?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Hatfield.
Stop bullying me, yeah.
Aye.
Councilmember Wong. Councilmember Grau.
Aye.
Mayor Woodshuttle, aye. We're back in two weeks. See you here Zooming again.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night. Thanks for joining us out in TV land.